All right, everybody. Good morning. Good morning, everybody. It is 8:00 a.m. I mean, I'm sorry, 9:00. Whoa. And it's 8:00 a.m. somewhere. It is 8:00 a.m. somewhere. Yes, just saying. But, oh, yes, two hours. Well, somewhere it's 8:00 a.m. in the world. But here it is 9:00 a.m. So it is 9:00 a.m. And I'm going to call this special meeting of the Washoe County School District board of trustees to order. And we will start with our roll call. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Madam President. President Taylor.
I'm here.
Trustee Calvert.
Here.
Trustee Church.
Here.
I am here. Trustee Nicolet.
Here.
Trustee Rodriguez.
Here.
We have a quorum, Madam President.
Okay, thank you very much. And welcome to everybody. Thank you for being here. For our pleasure this morning, we're going to ask Mr. Pablo Duran, if you would, please, sir, lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Okay, this is a big day in the history of the Washoe County School District. As you all know, again, welcome and thank you for being here. A special welcome to our five applicants who are finalists. We are excited. We hope you are too. Just a little bit of review, just to make sure everyone's clear on how the day will be conducted. We're each candidate, each applicant, I should say, excuse me, will have 30 minutes, 30 minutes for the interview. Within that 30-minute period of time, you'll have time, you can do an opening comments. And then each of the trustees will have a question that we will ask. And then at the end of that, the time remain, you'll also, you'll have an opportunity to give any closing, any final remarks you'd like to have. It is an open meeting, public meeting. It's being streamed live, as you know. But we're going to ask, if you are not being interviewed, if you have not yet been interviewed, then if you will wait, we have a room that we're going to ask you to wait in, if you would, so that everyone gets their first run at the questions when they have an opportunity to answer them. We're going to use our same scientific method, which has served us well. You have the cup method over there, JJ? Thank you very much. Not sure if she's using the same cup each meeting, is there?
Yes.
Because is there a legal issue with that?
I think it's okay.
You think we're okay? But it's the same issue to make sure we're good? Make sure we're good, our scientific cup method? So it'll be, it'll be random. You could go in a random order. When you come in, the questions will be sitting, will be there for you, so you'll have an opportunity to take a look at them before we start our 30 minutes. Just to kind of give you an idea of what's to come. This is not a gotcha time. This is time for us to get to know you a little bit better. The 30 minutes will be on the clock, so your entire time will be 30 minutes once you, should you need it. So everyone doesn't use all of their time, and that's okay, too. Right, there's no, that doesn't reflect poorly or whatever. That, that, that's, when we're done, we're done, right? And then, once you have been interviewed, however, you're certainly welcome to, to watch the rest of the, of the interviews, the rest of the meeting, in fact, along with the rest of, the rest of the public. I think that covers everything, Counsel, to leave it out. And then after, after that, we will have, after all of the interviews, we will have, probably take a break. And then we will have public comment. And then we will begin the deliberation process. And we will do much like, as we did before, have our conversations. I'm going to ask each trustee, if you would, just to kind of share your thoughts and with every way that, with every way that feels best for you. And then we will vote. And then turn them all in to JJ and Counsel. We'll have a quick little break as they count and so on. And then based upon where we land, we'll continue to go forward and either with motions or votes, until we get down to our final trustee selection. And then just in time for the school year, because it's coming really fast. So that lays out, that lays out the plan for the day. And also, when you, when you're, when you're in the waiting room, if you were, we're going to ask you to leave your electronic devices with staff. Again, so that, again, there'll be, so that there isn't a well-meaning friend saying, "Hey, be ready for..." Right, well-meaning. But we want everyone to have the same opportunities to answer those questions for the first time as we go through this process, if you would. So hopefully, that's very clear, is what we did before. And I'm sure you're watching then, so it should be familiar. But I wanted to do a review, just to make sure everyone's aware of what happens. And Joe was probably all the blur for you last time, because you were out there. And so this, this gives you another, another opportunity as well, so. Okay, so that being said, we will go into Agenda Item 2.01, Interviews by the Board of Trustees, by the Board of the following legally qualified applicants to fill the vacancy on the Board in District D who were selected for such interviews at the July 20th, 2021 special meeting. Hava Ahmed? Hava, I got that, right, Hava?
Yes.
Yes, yes, yes. Oh, it is? If, please, will you spell that for us?
A-H-A-D.
A-D. That's right, I knew that. I've seen your name a lot in emails, so. Okay. But Hava Ahmad. Okay, thank you very much for that correction. We apologize for that. Serena Robb, Tyler Rogers, Anne Silver, and Elizabeth, or Beth Smith, welcome again to each of you. We know how this process is, and we just, again, appreciate your stand in it, not turning and running after the last time and just standing in this thing. We're getting close. This is discussion and possible action to appoint one of the interviewed applicants to fill the vacancy again for District D. Okay, that was our overview. And now, at this time, I'll ask if, we're going to pull whoever's first. And then whomever is not selected to be first, we're going to ask if you would follow staff waiting in the back of the room. Hava Ahmed. All right. Welcome, Ms. Ahmed, if you would. You can have a seat here at the table for other applicants. There's Ms. Anderson right there in the middle. And then they'll do the process, however you leave your electronic devices and so on. I want to make sure I get this correct. Is it Ahmed or Ahmad?
Ahmad.
Ahmad, okay.
Yes.
Okay. All right, so take a deep breath. You have a moment. She just put the questions there before you, so we'll give you a moment to review them before we begin.
Okay.
All set? Okay, then, I just want to make sure we're all set. So we're going to go ahead and start now. You can begin with whatever opening comments you'd like, please.
Okay, good morning, and thank you, President Taylor and Board members. My name is Hava Ahmed, and I'm an applicant for District D appointment. Before we begin, I wanted to start with the expert, excerpt, excuse me, from my favorite poet, Rumi. It's beyond our ideas of rightdoing and wrongdoing, there's a field. I'll meet you there. Now, this, like, portion of this poem was incredibly important to me because I utilized it in my personal statement for law school. And when I was writing that personal statement, it came to my attention that the world isn't black and white, right? It's a series of grade nuances where we have to work together and balance our interests and risk manage, essentially, kind of what the possible outcomes can be to every decision that's made to be able to support a community. In this case, the community is the student community. So I am here today because I want to meet this board, the staff overseen by this board, and the community in that proverbial field to overcome the political, a politicalization of education, to open up transparency, communication, and accountability with our community, to provide readily and understandable policies that put our students first. I am here today because I believe the key to Nevada's economic development and diversification lies in the alignment of the K-12 education delivery system with post-secondary education and workforce partner-led training programs. I'm here because of the pandemic and because I know that our educators and students need an advocate to remind key policymakers and stakeholders that we must put techniques to play to mitigate learning loss and loss of social, emotional growth, and to be able to utilize about $121 million that we have gotten from federal relief. And to strategically utilize and invest that money to put the lives of our students first. I am here as the aunt of a Washoe County School District student, as an individual who has done many, many things within the school district from back in the day of going to every high school with the JRTC program to, you know, really build communication with those schools to registering high school students all throughout Washoe County School District to vote. I have been a community member. I'm involved in many community groups, including the Reno Sparks NAACP. And I actually am one of the mentees of Darryl Feenster. In addition to that, I am here above all because we need to provide mental health support students to our, mental health supports to our students and make sure that they're readily available to help address a lot of the issues that have arisen because of the pandemic. Over the last week, I spent a lot of time reaching out to different educators across District D to ask them what they would like to see in their trustee. From those responses, I saw everything from mask mandates to teacher pay, to addressing teacher recruitment and retention, to utilizing those ARP and ESAR funds to be able to really get the longevity out of them, as well as, and this is going to be the biggest, but to build more robust partnerships outside of the ones that we currently have with mental health and behavioral health programs to ensure that we can provide those supports to our students, as well as going back and auditing the current programs that are in existence to make sure that we only fund the programs and continue the programs that are led to outcomes. I know that it's, I'm young. It's, I graduated from the school district 10 years ago from all District A schools. And I know that my experiences from that time are going to be very different from many of the members on this board. But I feel like that I have a lot I can give to this community to be able to bridge the gap, to make sure that there is this relationship within, like, that is based off a trust and transparency where our community members feel like they're always going to be heard. So from there, it's, I know that I have a list of very hard questions in front of me. I don't know if you, each individual member wants to ask their question and then have me respond. And then from there, I'll kind of state my closing. So thank you for giving me this opportunity, though.
Thank you again for being here. We're just going to go right ahead and start with District A. Trustee Church.
Good morning. I guess we're going in alphabetical order. And just for the record, for the folks in the audience, I wear hearing aids, and that's why I wear the shield versus the mask. Otherwise, it crimps and damages the hearing aids. So for those people that like to criticize, at least you know why. So thank you anyways, very much. Question. What are the major budget and spending issues faced by Washoe County School District, and how do we fix them?
Thank you, Trustee Church. So our major budget and spending issues that we face in Washoe County School District have changed a little bit with the implementation of the People-Centered Funding Plan. So I'm going to separate it all into infrastructure and then into kind of education within the classroom. So the way that we current, like, that we funded education under the Nevada plan, we had categorical grants. And those categorical grants were really given separate buckets to receive funding out of for every school district. Whereas now, all of that's folded into one. And now, instead of having things like, for instance, I'm going to use Zoom and Victory Schools as, like, an example. So Zoom Schools were a category of school that was targeted towards, like, high EL populations. And Victory Schools targeted towards at-risk students, right? But instead, now, if a school is receiving the wait under the People-Centered Funding Plan for having more than one student that receives the EL wait, then you have to provide X amount of services. So that includes, like, different types of supports for those students, like, after-school tutoring. And they are, they are very outlined, like, they are very explicit and outlined in Nevada advice statute. So one of the major issues that we're going to be having is to the transition into that budget and to be able to utilize the block funding amount that we're getting to be able to provide all of those services while supporting our other groups of students that wouldn't necessarily need those services. In addition to that, we're also going to run into issues with the fact that the People-Centered Funding Plan utilized a, the best way for me to say this, it was a matrix essentially used for, to calculate kind of the cost of living that is not in line with the inflation in Washoe County. And because of that, and that was actually partially the reason why I ended up putting my name into this, because during the legislative session, I, being from Washoe County, being a graduate of Washoe County School District and having so many vested interests here with my family being here, is one of those things that I don't want our educators negatively impacted by this transition to the new funding formula. And I do not want our students to be negatively impacted. So going from one side, we have those issues. But then we have the influx of the $121 million that can be utilized, you know, somewhat loosely, you know, but within the confines of the federal guidance to be able to address things like learning loss and kind of technological gaps and really make up for some of the things that we ended up having to expend money on that we did not expect, right? So going forward, that's one portion of the budget and spending issues that we're going to be facing, is how to divide up that pie in a way that's going to be long-lasting and successful and lead to the success of our students. And then we have the infrastructure section of our budget. And we are very lucky to be able to have passed Washoe County 1. But even with that pass, we are still, and especially myself, growing up in District A with that middle school that was built up the street from my parents' house, I know that the community is pushing back a little bit on the cost of schools, right, and the cost of the construction itself. We are going to be running into issues with, like, continued construction over the fact that our supply chains were interrupted because of COVID. So looking at both, we have different pots of money and that aspect of looking at infrastructure, whether or not we need to issue more bonds, and then the actual funding for the classroom.
Painter?
Yeah, of course.
Please, go ahead.
So you just mentioned the cost of construction. So what's your opinion? Obviously, you're extremely knowledgeable. But in, for the record, I gave you a five last time because of your knowledge. It's incredible. But how do we deal with that cost? Do we say no, or do we just pay it?
Well, we have to look at the needs, is what my opinion is, and make sure that the schools that we are building, that they have a very big impact once they're built. So for instance, if we are building an area where the neighboring elementary school, so we're building an elementary school in this, like, in this case, right? This hypothetical. But if we're building in an area where the school that's nearest to there doesn't have high class size ratios, whereas if you go down the street, maybe if you walk over to District B, there's going to be an elementary school there that's 50% above recommended ratios, then we would ideally want to build the school there first. So it's going to have to be a lot of balancing to start with until the, the economy evens out. And it will even out. It's just going to be a matter of time, then going back to businesses, too, and seeing if there's any way that we can get them to buy in more than just that contract from us to have them to purchase materials and to build.
I might have missed it, but do we say no at any point?
Of course. It's, there, it's always a balance. And so I can't say no off the bat, right? And I'm not going to come to you guys and say, "Yeah, no new building." Because realistically, we're, there's going to be a point where we do have to continue building. However, everything that happens needs to be done strategically, and it needs to be done with the best risk management and balancing that we can utilize.
It came to my attention after.
Trustee Church, I'm sorry, we're, I'm just, I want to make sure we have a chance to get to all the questions, if you don't mind? Is this, is this a follow-up to that?
Yeah, it was a follow-up to the taxation, to the budgeting.
If she can just get straight, I just want to make sure everyone has the chance. So go ahead, sir.
Well, I'll ask a question, you can tell me. It just also came to my attention that there's two statewide tax ballots for education. And while we don't have a, we have a voice in it as a district, setting legislative policy, that kind of thing, do you have an opinion on those, tax for education statewide?
Oh, yeah, of course. And just so that everyone knows, those two tax ballot initiatives were actually taken off the ballot. So that was part of the mining deal. So it's the last, I believe, the LSST tax initiative petition was taken off. It should have been taken off within the last two weeks. I can double-check and follow up with you on that. But the initiative petition that increased, so it created another threshold on the non-restricted gaming license, that was taken off. So those are no longer options, and that was just in exchange for being able to get the mining money and to get the mining tax and then the money directed specifically to education.
You good, sir? All right, thank you. Trustee Menedo.
I'm going to wave mine to somebody else's question right now.
Okay. All right. District C, Trustee Rodriguez.
Good morning. So could you support a board decision you did not vote in favor of? Why or why not?
Thank you, Trustee Rodriguez. And the short answer is yes. All of us, and just as individuals, we all have our own personal opinions, and we all have our voting. But at the end of the day, the successes and failures of an organization are up to the organization's board. So regardless of whether or not, I personally am voting for something. It's if the group and if the individuals on the board vote by majority for something that, you know, I did not vote for, I don't have a choice. It's one of those things that, that is the direction that the board is moving. It's if, unless you move cohesively in that direction, there's no way to be able to implement the changes that would need to be implemented.
Thank you very much. You're good, Trustee. Okay, we'll keep going. Oh, it's my turn. Trustee, Trust, District E. The board has experienced quite a bit of scrutiny over the past several years. You're aware of that. So what specific experience do you have that you believe would help lend stability and community confidence?
Thank you for that, President Taylor. So it is no secret that this board specifically has experienced a lot of scrutiny over the past several years. Especially being a community member, it has been very hard to watch. It's, I think, is the easiest way I can say that. But what I believe that I possess that would lend stability and community confidence is my ability to communicate with everyone. So when it comes down to it, it's, I know, especially with some of the emails that were sent to you in support of me, I look very partisan. But when it comes down to it, I'm not. And education is not partisan in any way, shape, or form, and it should not be. When it comes down to it, you have to be able to have open communication and transparency and be able to say, when you cannot answer a question, that you cannot answer the question. So for instance, I had an individual within the community after my first interview call me and ask me point-blank whether or not I would vote on social justice. And I was very honest with her and told her that, "No, I cannot tell you whether or not I would or would not vote for that. But I can tell you what my experiences are, what my personal opinions are." But that, at the end of the day, the way that I would vote doesn't depend on my personal opinions. It depends on the facts as they are presented. So going forward, I think a lot of it has to do with the pivoting and the conversation and kind of getting control over our public relations and making sure that people realize that, you know, every person on this board is human. And no, no human is going to be without mistake. But that, at the end of the day, when those mistakes are made, we have to be able to sit down and say, "Hey, we might not agree that the sky is blue right now, but there is somewhere else that we can come together and agree upon and find where that point is and build from there." So I think a lot of it just has to do with open communication, making sure that dialogue is there. And at the end of the day, it's, I don't know about everyone else, but my cell phone number is pasted everywhere. So if someone wants to talk, I am always ready to talk to them.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much. District F, Trustee Calvert.
Good morning.
Pull that mic down a little bit, if you would. Yeah, thank you. Okay.
What do you see at the major, as the major strengths and weaknesses of the Washoe County School District?
Thank you for that, Trustee Calvert. So I would say that our major strengths are where we are economically. Looking at the entirety of the state of Nevada, we did not do, like, our economic situation is not as dire as it is in southern Nevada, and we should be very happy about that. But because of that, we are in a position where we can really leverage our, our status of where we are and where the businesses are in our community to build better relationships, to ensure that, ensure that we have a workforce pipeline from K-12 so that our students aren't just graduating in high school or going to a CTE program, but we want them to be able to either go directly into the workforce or to be able to go into a post-secondary education program that's going to take them to the workforce at some point. I would say one of the biggest weaknesses of the school district and of just school districts across the country right now is this level of distrust that has been built when it comes to the community and the school board. So it's, and the discussions that I've had with a lot of people over the last week, they, they really did separate out the school board from the school district, from the community. And that's not how that works. The school board and the school district should be synonymous. And when it comes down to it, we are working to support the school district in their endeavors. So I would say that the weakness is within that aspect where I guess we are not portraying to the community exactly how we're doing that. And in addition to that, I would also say it's, it's very easy to get defensive, right? Especially if you're met with opinions that are contrary to what you believe you are doing or what is happening. And I think a lot of that is, though, too, because of COVID and because of kind of the way that socialization has changed so much. But going forward, we really do have to build that idea of building rapport, finding common ground, and staying student-centered and student-focused so that every action that we make has to ask, "How is this going to impact students?" And whether or not it's going to impact them positively, negatively? Is there an outcome attached to it? And kind of go forward from there. And I think that as time goes on and as we do kind of learn how to deal with this pandemic, because it hasn't necessarily gone away, right? We'll be able to build better relationships with those community members, with those stakeholders, where, you know, at the end of the day, you, again, you will not agree on what the color of the sky is, but you'll be able to agree that we all are in it for the students at the end of the day.
Thank you very much. Looks like you're good with that, Trustee Calvert. We go to District G, Trustee Nicolet.
Thank you. Welcome, Hava. The Washoe County School District Board of Trustees utilizes a balanced governance approach to conducting business. Please provide your understanding of balanced governance.
Thank you, Trustee Nicolet. So balanced governance, to me, is really finding a way so that you don't micromanage your superintendent or your auditor, right? But instead, it's making sure that you work for a common goal and that there is an outcome to move forward from any situation that you make or that you're in. So when it comes to balanced governance, it's making sure that everyone stays in their own lane, essentially, right? Except, so when you're making decisions, you're being, they're segmented. So you have the staff, for instance, go through and give the recommendations on how it would, like, on how a task would be implemented and what the best approaches would be. And they would give those recommendations to the board that would be able to review those, ask questions, and be able to direct, kind of, where else are we not looking to make sure that we have all of the facts that we need to be able to make a well-rounded decision? But when it comes to balanced governance and when it comes to the school districts, specifically in school districts across the country, it's something that is still fairly new, and it has not been implemented fully. Because when you look at balanced governance and when you look at all the documentation that's associated with it, to me, it looks a lot like what businesses are trying to adopt in their sectors as well. in their sectors as well. So for instance, I'm in my MBA right now, so I do a lot with making sure you know how to manage your team, right? And building a team. So you have everyone come to, come to the table and you say, what are your strengths and weaknesses? And then you're going to go over, okay, these are the different roles that you have. How can we work within those roles? It's who wants to take up what task, right? But in the form of a governance structure, structure specifically, it's more of ensuring that every stakeholder has an avenue to be able to air their opinions, and that's why an elected board is so important. But it's making sure that those are balanced with the implementation that, with the recommendations that staff has.
Thank you, Dr. Nicolet. We're going to circle back around to trustee Minetto, District B.
Thank you, Madam President. What efforts would you put forth to stay out of the weeds? Do you know what that means?
Well, I guess, okay, that's, that's a very broad statement. So when you say stay out of the weeds, what, what context are you focusing on?
I think I'm kind of asking, you know, well, stay out of the weeds means it's not my job to call somebody if the boiler's not working at a school.
Yeah.
Even though I might see that and think, oh, that's not good. Kids are cold. I, I kind of view us as the airplane flying over. So what would you do to make sure we keep flying over?
So I am a really big fan of procedures, and I believe that there should be a procedure for everything. So for instance, if you had a constituent come to you saying that the boiler was out, you wouldn't necessarily go straight to the school or call the boiler repair person yourself. You would want to ideally flag it for the proper individual, which in this case, I want to believe it's Superintendent McNeil, and then you would delegate that down to the staff member who is in charge of that. So really, there's an avenue for everything, and it's whether or not we want to utilize those avenues and procedures and make sure that we support the district as a whole. Because at the end of the day, you know, we, we are only as good as the, as the support that we can give to our superintendent in the school district.
Thank you very much, clerk Minetto. Okay, we have, we have some, some time remaining, which gives you a great opportunity to ask any, excuse me, share any closing remarks that you might have for us as we come to the end of the interview.
Okay. Well, you know, thank you so much for allowing me to come here and to speak with everyone today. Kind of going forward, I just want to flag for everyone that it's, you know, the pandemic has definitely exacerbated a lot of issues. And I know that the last time I spoke to everyone, we talked about how the technological divide created the haves and the have-nots. But one of the biggest tasks this board is going to be set out with completing is going to be the allocation of those federal funds in a way that supports the staff and that supports the school district to be able to support our students. So going forward, I mean, I would just have to ask that this board always kind of consider outcomes when it comes to students and consider that in every decision that's made to ask, how is this going to impact our students? In addition to that, it's, I know that some of the schools here do not have their own mental health or other licensed professionals, and the principals and teachers are all, I'm very concerned about that. In addition, I've also heard concerns over the mask mandates as well. And then I just ask with that to review all of the science, to review peer-reviewed studies when it comes to masks and children, to make sure that we can mitigate the spread. And lastly, you know, it's, we all know that there is an elephant in the room when it comes to social justice and when it comes to the social justice curriculum that is to be taught. And with that, I would just like to say that at the end of the day, we have to remember that everything needs to be consent-based and respect-based because our students have to be able to interact and interplay with, on the national, international scale, and they have to be able to understand individuals from other cultures and be able to innovate more so than anything else. I really do appreciate the job that this school district has done, and specifically Superintendent McNeil, you have done God's work, I will say, in being able to get our students back to school. And I just hope that going forward, we can mitigate any type of issues that arise with the public so that we put our goals first and support the superintendent to be able to support the school district and support our students and their outcomes.
Okay. Well, thank you very much, Ms. Hava. We appreciate your taking the time. You got a chance to be first, and you get to exhale.
Yes.
And you're certainly welcome to, invited to stay if you'd like.
Madam President?
Yes, trustee.
I just have a question on procedure.
Yes, sir.
Received some emails that unrelated to the questions here, but I would like to ask for clarification because you don't know if people are telling you the truth or not when they write you. I mean, are we allowed to ask questions not on the, not here, or are we strictly limited to this?
I believe from a procedural, because the questions that were asked were vetted by legal as well as by HR. So I believe procedurally, we're pretty much stuck to what we have here. If there's a follow-up to something, then, then we're, we have the permission to, to do that. But in terms of bringing in something outside of here, then I think that goes outside of just being consistent. Now, legal, you can jump in and tell me if I'm off-base on that, but I believe that consistency in asking if one of the same questions is what we're, do. I hear you, right? Because we all got emails and so on and such, but I, I don't think we're able to do that at this time.
Yeah, I, I think it's ultimately at your discretion as the chair, but I agree with you that in order to make sure that everyone receives a fair interview, a normal interview process requires the similar questions, similar content, similar context. You can take emails for what they're worth. I don't, you know, so.
Yeah, and, and we, I appreciate that, legal, and, and they give me some flexibility in it, but I'm, I'm just more comfortable with them. I mean, I have questions too, so I get it, right? We all get, well, not all get it, but we get a lot of the same emails, right? And I get it, but I'm just more comfortable with them on either candidate, on any issue. And we've gotten a lot of stuff to stay consistent with that. I think that's the fairest way to do it, and that's how we've done it, the District C, and I think we should maintain that with District.
Okay. And then my follow-on question. I assume that we could discuss those emails or comments or public comments?
I believe we can.
During deliberation?
I believe we can.
Okay, thank you.
There's no limit on that, is there? No, no, I believe we can.
Could I possibly get a chance to respond to the question though?
Oh, well.
If it's something that is dire, because I just want to make sure if it's something that I, needs a response, that I have an opportunity to respond to?
Well, actually, at this point, that wouldn't be appropriate because that's not a question that we're going to ask, whatever the, the concern may be, but you'll certainly be able to be in the room when we deliberate and, and have that. I know it's, it's, it's one of those where, hey, if this came up, I'd like to address that, but no other for us to maintain the, the fair and consistent process. We're really going to stay with the same questions, though, and those that may be a follow-up to that specific question for each of applicants. I, I understand it, but, but the consistency, I believe, is really, we really want to be consistent to make sure that we're absolutely fair to everybody, so.
So I guess, could I use the last two minutes?
Yeah, you've got, you've got two minutes and 33 seconds.
Okay. So I will use my last two minutes to respond. I currently do still work for the Clark County Education Association as their lobbyist. I am specifically focusing currently on economic development and diversification and the workforce pipeline between K through 20. So we are in the midst of trying to create an asset map in the state. I know that there is concern from the educator associations locally based that I would not be able to vote on their contracts based off of CCEA having split from the state education association. However, it's, I did have a conversation with the Washoe Education Association president about that, saying that if there's any type of discomfort, then that can go to the Nevada Ethics Commission. However, in Southern Nevada, in CCSD, there was one school board trustee who was elected who was a staff member of the Nevada State Education Association. She was known on record for talking against the Clark County Education Association, so the Nevada Commission on Ethics came down and said that she was not able to vote on contracts. I have no issue not being able to vote on a contract, but I did give Phil the advice that at the end of the day, I'm always going to tell him to ask for more money because I feel like our teachers are underpaid. That's just a personal thought. I mean, it's also looking at what the pay is. So going from there, it's, I do want to acknowledge that that was raised to me, but it's, I am going to go to the discretion of the Nevada Commission on Ethics on that because I am an advocate for all of our educators across the state of Nevada, and all I want for our students in Washoe County School District is to be able to have the best and highest quality education that we can give them.
I appreciate that, Ms. Hava. You had that time to use, and you certainly did that, and that's just fine. I think we're okay. Other questions? I mean, it didn't get you exactly what you wanted, but any other questions on that, trustee Church? Nope? All right. Well, then, thank you very much. Again, we appreciate that you're coming and staying and, and staying in the process. And again, you're, you're certainly invited to, to stay for the rest of these interviews.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hava. Okay, staff will get Beth Smith. We'll have a moment to just kind of exhale a little bit. so if you haven't had a chance to jump in your email to take a look at those, then I Welcome, Ms. Smith. Okay, before we begin, I want to take an opportunity to review those questions in front of you, and then, then we'll start, okay?
Yes, thank you. All right.
Okay, you're all ready to go? So we'll start again, just a quick review, 30 minutes, and we'll begin with your opening comments, and then each trustee will have, we've all have questions that we'll ask, there may be follow-ups to those questions, and then you'll have an opportunity, should time permit, to give a closing remarks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. This one is yours.
Hello, President Taylor, Superintendent McNeil, and Board of Trustees. Thank you for the opportunity to present myself as a finalist in this process. Something I wanted to touch on before the questions is why I enjoy working with the district so much and the kind of outcomes I can help support. I've had the opportunity to be a part of a great collaboration that happens here, and I get to see feedback from our families and how they create the strongest solutions. I'd like to tell you a story about one of those times, and that's when the zoning advisory committee and district staff partnered with South Reno families in 2019 to create school boundaries and a matriculation plan in advance of the opening of Marcy Hur's Middle School. Over the course of several months, the zoning committee and district staff heard directly from Pleasant Valley and Brown Elementary families about their previous history with zoning, what was important to them, and concerns about how future school openings could change that zoning. I led an ongoing dialogue with families during community meetings, which resulted in the committee and district staff creating and presenting several evolving options that addressed their feedback and offered different ways to move forward. I also made myself available to parents for conversations and meetings to answer questions and hear from people who are more comfortable in a non-public setting. Ultimately, the zoning committee passed a thoughtful and nuanced recommendation that addressed most of the community's near and long-term concerns, including anticipating how the future Rio Wrangler Elementary School could impact families in a specific neighborhood. Our recommendation was adopted by the Board of Trustees, and it's in place today. I love this story because it shows how families, volunteers, and the district can listen to each other and work through issues while staying focused on the shared goal of creating the best possible outcome. And now I look forward to beginning the question portion of today's interview.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. We're going to start with District A, trustee Church.
Thank you very much. What are the major budget and spending issues faced by the Washoe County School District, and how do we fix them?
Thank you very much for the question. So absolutely, I think that the largest budget issue that we face is the fact that we get a reduced amount of funding compared nationally to other states from our legislature. I do know that we recently changed to the pupil-centered funding plan, which is more in line with how many states have adopted funding or are moving to that direction. However, the anticipated amount is still expected to be much lower than the national average. So although that funding approach does simplify the funding as it relates to each individual student, meaning that instead of breaking it down to all of those different categories, the money now wholly funds each student based on their needs, I do believe that that is an opportunity so that that money does follow the students, and there could be some efficiencies found with that individual's spending per pupil. But again, we can't lose sight of the fact that the overall amount being allocated or anticipated to be allocated is still much lower than the national average. So when you take that and you layer on the fact that we do have mandated programs that come from the legislature, we also have priorities as a district and a certain standard of education that we want to uphold, we also want to achieve better class sizes, and that becomes a big balancing act. So what I have seen also in the positives is taking a very close look at where we can find efficiencies in the district, making sure that we are taking advantage of sometimes using outside contractors or support where possible versus also having onsite staff. And as far as I can tell, honestly, it's a great balancing act. And as far as I see, I do believe that our district is doing the very best with the financing that it does have, but it is my hope overall that Nevada will eventually see at least on par national averages per pupil eventually coming out of the legislature.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Trustee Church.
I think I'll ask the same follow-on question that I asked before, and I was just double-checking my figures. July 19th, according to the Secretary of State, there'll be two ballot measures for improving education, one for sales tax, one for gaming tax, known as S1 and S2. Do you think we as a board should, or you as an individual, should support or not support those tax measures?
So I'm not very familiar with the tax measures, so I do want to be clear about that. However, I do believe that the board has a place to be the voice of the students' education and the health of the district, and I do believe that parents and residents should understand how voting yes possibly would actually impact the quality of the education. A lot of people initially might say, no, taxes, no, let's, let's pause on that. But then, wait, what is that really getting us? What is it that we really need? And you don't need to look any further than the success of WC1 and that campaign with really changing minds and hearts and understanding how that funding was really going to support the district. So I would say, right now, again, tentatively, I would say that it is something that the board should consider supporting.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. We're going to go to District B, clerk Minetto.
Thank you, Madam President. Welcome. What efforts would you put forth to stay out of the weeds?
That is a great question. Thank you very much, trustee Minetto. One of my favorite sayings is, or calling out when someone can't see the forest for the trees, so I really know what you mean here. I do really well with context, so sometimes I do understand that you need to get down more on the micro level and you need to understand aspects or nuances of a situation, but you always have to pull back for that larger view, and that's really the role of the board overall. The board and the district employs a phenomenal, phenomenal staff of professionals. They are all highly trained and highly educated in their areas. They have done the work to bring recommendations and options to this board and to Superintendent McNeil. I do believe that I naturally have a respect and a trust for those decisions. Now, I do believe that a good board member can play a part in asking questions, looking at it from different perspectives, listening to the community, and making sure that we are iteratively getting down to better options and evolved options. But I am not a micromanager, and I personally don't like being micromanaged myself, so I have a natural respect for that healthy and respectful distance between other professionals performing their work and that of a board member guiding and leading and asking questions as we ultimately reach the right decision.
Trust me now, you're good? Okay. Trustee Rodriguez, please, sir.
Good morning. How could you, could you support a board decision you did not vote in favor of? Why or why not?
Thank you very much for the question, trustee Rodriguez. Absolutely. The short answer is absolutely yes. Life is about compromise in all of our relationships and on all of our teams. There has never been a time where I've had any working relationship, personal relationship, or even in marriage, where you agree 100% of the time. The focus in a situation like that is on consensus and teamwork, also recognizing that many of these situations have more than one right answer. So just because your preference or the right answer that you felt was the best fit does not mean that that was the only right answer. I have rarely come across a situation where I could not see the validity and the logic in the other decision that was also made, and that's something that we see very frequently with the zoning advisory committee. So there is no why not, there's only why in this situation, because again, I realize that we're dealing with situations that have a lot of nuance. There are many different right ways to move forward, and at the end of the day, it would be my role to serve in partnership with the board and to accept the decisions that it makes and to also help to contribute to how those decisions are being made.
Good to go, trustee Rodriguez? All right. District E, that's me. Welcome, Ms. Smith, once again. The board has experienced quite a bit of scrutiny over the past several years. No big secret, right? What specific experience do you have that you believe would help lend stability and build community confidence?
Absolutely. Thank you so much for that question. who's watching, zoning had traditionally been done in spots or in iterations over the course of time as schools were built. WC1 changed all of that, and it really necessitated a large transparent public body to really make these decisions. But zoning itself was something that had a lot of polarizing and friction felt in the community. So what I would do as a board member is I would follow the model that I've been following with the zoning advisory committee, which is making sure that everyone felt respected and heard, that I open myself up to the feedback. I also would not be the type of trustee who would come out in favor of something before it's time to actually make a decision, and I'd like to explain why that would be. Because of my experience on the zoning advisory committee, many times, an item would initially come up for community discussion, and I would end up feeling and voting and coming to a very different decision based on that arc of community involvement and with the ways that the options would actually evolve. So by staying out of that scrutiny, I feel that the way you do that is by being an open and honest and transparent board member, explaining why it is that you are voting or recommending the way that you are, and just generally showing respect. It is one of the things that the zoning advisory committee does do best, and I do believe that as its leader, that is in part because of the way that we follow. So that is, that's how I would go about staying out of that scrutiny, is really just by showing respect, acting in a transparent way, and always keeping an open mind, recognizing that not all parents will always agree with every decision, but I would like for them to know why I chose what I did.
Thank you for that answer, Ms. Smith. District F, Trustee Calvert.
Good morning. What do you see as the major strengths and weaknesses of the Washoe County School District?
Thank you so much for that question. There are so many strengths. I would say the number-one strength is the quality of the staff that the school district has, and I get to see that. I have a front-row seat to that going into my sixth year as a parent in the district. I get to see firsthand the counselors, the teachers, the administrators, the work that they do, the love they have, the passion, how intelligent they are, how committed they are. There is no greater strength, in my opinion, than the staff of the Washoe County School District. I don't really see weaknesses, I see opportunities, to be honest, and I think that we're capitalizing on a lot of those opportunities now. For example, one of the initiatives that I think is very, very positive is the evolving sense of what is education, the magnet schools, the career and technical academies. So opportunities like that to evolve what an education is and how we all individually learn and what it looks like to actually graduate and be ready for a life beyond that. Other opportunities that I see really also go back to budgeting. It kind of goes back to that very first question, that there are opportunities and there is always pressure from a budgetary standpoint that maybe we would do things differently if we had more funding, but I recognize that pain points like that don't necessarily go away overnight. But overall, in addition to the first strength that I mentioned, I would also say that I believe that the committed families and the involved families are a secondary and very, very important strength of the district. I see the families being involved, I see the volunteers, I see the parents that are raising their hands to be substitutes and guest teachers, and so I really feel that we have a phenomenal community, which is really led by phenomenal staff.
So what did you say, or how did you explain to your children that you were, and your husband, that you were running for this position?
Thank you so much for that question. This is something that's been on my mind for a while. Actually, I'll tell you a quick story if I can, and that's really how I ended up sitting in this seat today. So several years ago, when my son started kindergarten, he was actually with 44 students in kindergarten, it was a team-taught classroom, and it was our very first year in the district. It was an interesting year. So myself and several families reached out to our newly-elected board member, and that was Melina Raymond. We met her for coffee one night to talk about classroom sizes and those issues, and she was very, very helpful. That was also my very first time meeting her. And then after all the parents left, she and I stayed back, and I asked her a very fateful question, and I said, "How can I help?" And she said, "I can absolutely tell you how you can help," and that's becoming more involved with the school district. At that time, the zoning advisory committee was being formed, and she offered me the opportunity to apply, to serve under her, which I then did. Over the course of those next four years, I found a greater purpose in myself than I've ever known outside of being a wife and mother. The work that I do with the district and with the zoning advisory committee is absolutely a calling, and it touches me very deeply. Nonetheless, in the last election, it really was not the right opportunity for me to reach for that role. However, with life changing and the fates intervening, this opportunity presented itself. So when that opportunity did arise, my husband sat me down and said, "I know that you want this, we support you every step of the way." And my son was also incredibly excited. My younger one really doesn't have any awareness of any of this, but my older son knew that this was something that I wanted very much, and that's why he actually asked to attend with me last time. So it wasn't just a moment of deciding, it was more my circle around me, all recognizing that this was the moment and helping me reach for that.
All right, it looks like you're good. Trustee Calvert, so we're going to go to Dr. Nicolet. District G.
Thank you, and welcome. The Washoe County School District Board of Trustees utilizes a balanced governance approach to conducting business. Please provide your understanding of balanced governance.
Thank you very much, Trustee Nicolet. I am new to balanced governance, but I love it already, and the reason being is that I am an adherent to servant leadership. I believe Robert Greenleaf is revolutionary in the way that he views leadership, and his approach is something that I've followed for quite some time. So I did not know about balanced governance until I came to the fantastic training session that President Taylor offered to all of the candidates, but I have since studied that packet and learned more about it, and I do believe that it aligns very closely to servant leadership. So my interpretation and my understanding of that is that we are here to be colleagues together. We are here to positively advance ourselves, our opinions, to reach the best possible outcome. That does not always mean agreeing, but it does always mean being respectful. It means not rubber-stamping, and it means not micromanaging. It means finding that middle way, which again, going back to Trustee Minneto's question, is something that I am naturally very well in and just naturally adapts to my style. So I do believe in the informed oversight process, which goes back to, again, Trustee Minneto's question about asking probing questions, making sure that we're looking at situations from 360 degrees, because one item or topic might seem very clear if you're this close to it, but then you pull out and you see that there's several different perspectives, and then you look behind you and you see that there's even more information. And so you look at things from the larger sense to see that full story, and it may very well be that the first opinion you had is the one you end up voting with, but now you have a much larger appreciation, again, going back to that informed oversight model, to really understand the implications of it. And so that middle-way approach is just very naturally who I am as a person and how I've conducted myself professionally and personally up to this point.
Thank you very much. I think those are all of our trustee questions, and so we give you this opportunity, Ms. Smith, for any closing remarks, any final remarks you'd like to leave with the Board of Trustees.
Thank you. I sincerely appreciate your questions today and for the time that you've taken with the other finalists and me. It is a true honor to be at this point in the process. As I hope I've shown in my application and my answers today, I'm passionate about education and committed both personally and professionally through volunteer work to support our students and teachers. I will be a collaborative, mission-driven colleague and board member from day one. Thank you very much for considering me for this opportunity to serve. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Again, you are...
I have a question. Can I ask a follow-up to what she said that's directly related to the question?
To what she said?
Yeah.
Sure, yes, sir.
So you just said, I pronounce it collaborative, I think I got that right.
You got it right.
And specifically in response to Dr. Nicolet's question, you talked about board governance, which deals also with the relationship between the trustees. So for the sake of hypothetical, you're on one side of the issue, there's a, let's just say, conservative, we'll call him Jay, who disagrees or is on the other side of an issue. How do you view that collaborative relationship with somebody on the board that you may disagree with? Would you not talk to them? Would you communicate with? How do you view that?
Absolutely communicate. One of my favorite questions, and you will hear from this if I'm lucky enough to be one of your colleagues, is, "I'm curious about that. Can you help me understand how you have that thought or where that has come from?" Chances are, you've been pulling from information or you've been hearing from people that I have not, and so I see that as an opportunity to widen my scope of perspective on whatever that topic is.
Trustee Church? Okay. Everybody else, okay? All right. All right, thank you, Ms. Smith.
Thank you.
Again, you're invited to certainly stay in the room or go watch live, whatever you like to do, but you can at least exhale now.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Anne Silver.
Okay, staff will get Ms. Silver and we'll... Welcome, Ms. Silver.
Thank you very much.
Okay, again, you know, we'll have 30 minutes. We'll start with you, with your opening comments. We'll have questions, each of us will have questions, maybe follow-ups to those questions or even your remarks, and then you'll have closing remarks.
Madam President, didn't you want to give her time to look at the comments?
I'm just going to go there. That's okay, thank you for the, because sometimes I do forget. But before you begin, there is the list of questions before you there for you to take a look, and those are the questions we're going to ask you during this time. It's taped, so don't try to pull it up.
Oh, God.
All set?
Yes.
Okay, we'll begin with your opening remarks.
Well, good morning, and you know my name is Anne Silver, and it's an honor to be here and be before you. Let me start out by saying I believe I would represent a bold and innovative choice to sit on this Board of Trustees. I do not have conflicts of interest, I have no children in the district, nor am I related to a teacher, administrator, or other employee. It's very critical that our youth are the priority of this board, their critical core studies, their exposure to emotional intelligence, negotiation, and compromise, and the respect and admiration for education. The entire economic infrastructure of our Washoe County community is dependent upon the graduates of our school district, whether they move on to technical training, community college, university, or directly to employment. Commerce sustainability is dependent on a full, comprehensive, and individually appropriate education for every student. I bring strong leadership, negotiation, and conflict management skills to this board, and would pledge my commitment to actively listen, respect our teachers, school personnel, superintendent, and parents, and work to provide meaningful participation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Silver. We're going to start with our trustee from District A, Trustee Church.
Thank you, ma'am. Question. What are the major budget and spending issues faced by the Washoe County School District, and how do we fix them?
I wish I could say there's a fix. I think budget and spending issues have historically always been an issue for Washoe County School District, and there's probably no amount of money that would seem adequate. I can't think of a greater cause for concern than the budget for the Washoe County School District. I'm pleased to note that there's more funding through this legislative session in the CARES Act for the Washoe County School District, and from my perspective, what greater commitment could we make to students than to spend money on their education? I was part of the legislation, part of the legislative session actively lobbying on behalf of education and the public policy platform of the Reno Sparks Chamber of Commerce, and spending on behalf of our students is the number-one priority, I believe, in our state. We can't, we can't pay teachers enough for the work they do, we can't pay for enough schools to ensure that there are adequate-sized classrooms for individual learning, and I think that through the auspices of our superintendent and the Board of Trustees, it's incumbent upon the board to ensure that the budget is adequately addressed and that the public is aware how critical it is to have the priority budget to spend on the youth of our community.
Thank you, Ms. Silver. Okay, we'll go to District B, Clerk Minneto.
Thank you, Madam President. Welcome.
Thank you.
So what efforts would you put forth to stay out of the weeds?
That's a great question, because I report to a 17-member board, and I am constantly reminded how they often fall into the weeds, and it's my job to request that they perhaps view things from a 30,000-foot level and focus on policy rather than practical implementation, which should be left to the superintendent and her staff. I think it's very important that a board be absolutely knowledgeable about all public policy issues, governmental issues, budget issues that affect the school district, but the day-to-day operation should rest fully with the superintendent, should rest fully on her guidance and judgment and those professionals she surrounds herself with, and I think boards constantly have to be reminded to stay out of the weeds and to elevate themselves to full and open discussion of public policies that affect the school district, but not to get involved in those matters that are best left to those who've studied and been educated on school administration issues.
Thank you very much. Good, okay. Trustee Rodriguez, as you take a sip of water, sir, I know, right? District C, Trustee Rodriguez.
God, the smokes get into me. Good morning. Could you support a board decision you did not vote in favor of? Why or why not?
Well, I think it's the job of anyone who serves on a board to deliberately negotiate, work together, be candid in their responses, be candid about their opinions, but once a decision is made, to be fully supportive. We operate as a team when you're on a board, and I don't think there's a place to work to the disadvantage of the full board. If a decision is made that I don't agree with, it is my job, however, to support it and to support it publicly, to support it by working on behalf of my colleagues on the board, and to ensure that my criticism or anything I may have felt during the discussion is not evident after a decision is made.
Thank you very much, and I am the next trustee, District E. Again, welcome, Ms. Silver, again. The board has experienced, as you know, quite a bit of scrutiny over the past several years. What specific experiences do you have that you believe will help lend stability and to build community confidence?
Trustee Rodriguez, as you take a sip of water, sir, I know, right? District C, Trustee Rodriguez?
God, the smokes get into me. Good morning. Could you support a board decision you did not vote in favor of? Why or why not?
Well, I think it's the job of anyone who serves on a board to deliberately negotiate, work together, be candid in their responses, be candid about their opinions. But once a decision is made, to be fully supportive. We operate as a team when you're on a board, and I don't think there's a place to work at the, to the disadvantage of the full board. If a decision is made that I don't agree with, it is my job, however, to support it. And to support it publicly, to support it by working on behalf of my colleagues on the board, and to ensure that my criticism or anything I may have felt during the discussion is not evident after a decision is made.
Thank you very much. And I am the next trustee, District E. Again, welcome, Ms. Silver, again. The board has experienced, as you know, quite a bit of scrutiny over the past several years. What specific experiences do you have that you believe will help lend stability and to build community confidence?
I have been in conflict my entire professional career. I have never avoided it, and both working for state government, city government, the private sector, and nonprofits. I don't know of any enterprise or operation that's free of conflict. I do feel that my measured thinking, my legal background, my objectivity, my ability to actively listen and appreciate people's points of view would make a great deal of difference in, and I think, addressing the community's attitude about the Board of Trustees. Rather than view it in a critical lens, it should be reviewed as a group of incredibly dedicated individuals who are doing their very best to lead and guide education for our youth. Do I, do I think I could bring stability? Yes, I could bring stability because, once again, I do not have an investment in a child in the school district, nor am I related to anyone in the school district. And I think it's helpful to be able to hear issues and bring a very objective perspective, bring the perspective of the business community that's entirely dependent upon the graduates of our public education system, and to actively listen in a way where I hear parents, I hear their concerns. We allow time for them to voice their issues, because, of course, they're the most dramatically impacted by the education of their child. And I think the scrutiny that the community has given to this board could be reversed by the board adding someone with an objective perspective, a business perspective, and someone who isn't in the weeds of the school district.
Thank you very much. We're going to go to trustee Calvert, District F.
Good morning. What do you see as the major strengths and weaknesses of the Washoe County School District?
Well, I prefer to answer that by saying what I think are the strengths and the opportunities for development rather than weaknesses. I think you have a terrific superintendent who has shown her tremendous commitment to the school district, has worked with the business community, has developed opportunities for exchange with others that might not normally be asked about how they feel about the school district or the educational process. And I think the commitment of teachers, their willingness to have gotten through the pandemic in innovative ways where they were able to pivot and respond to the best of their abilities, I think deserves a tremendous amount of accolades. As an observer of the school district, I was overwhelmed by the support the community gave to teachers. Much like caregivers, teachers were heroes to our students, heroes to families, and they were put under extremely difficult conditions during the pandemic. And now, coming out of it, I'm sure there will be controversies about masks or no masks. What's the best way to teach? Can we teach in person? We're not through this pandemic, so I expect there to be issues. As far as the opportunities for improvement, I think we leave it to the superintendent to advise the Board of Trustees about what are the critical areas that deserve most of our attention. And they can't be all issues. We have to pick off one at a time and resolve them and do our best to put our best foot forward as we address each issue and attempt to find the means and the metrics that are needed to improve upon the various areas for improvement. I think one of my biggest concerns about opportunities for improvement is, once again, the connection to the community at large, business community, people who depend on the graduates of this school district to help commerce sustain itself and grow. And I would say that there's even greater opportunity to connect yourselves to, and the Board of Trustees, to business leaders, influential leaders in this community who have much to say about workforce development and improvement, and to ensure that parents understand that whether their child is the best student in the class or perhaps has individual needs or is falling behind, that there is a future and an academic opportunity for those students to thrive and find economic independence in the community once they graduate. So I would say the greatest area of improvement would be to find different voices on this board, bring different perspectives, and who can add or who have much to offer by way of discourse regarding education and its impact on the community as a whole.
You're good, trustee Calvert, or fellow?
I want to say that you mentioned something in your resume about a pipeline for education. So would you explain that from grade kindergarten to grade 12? And how does that fit in your role as a trustee?
Well, I think as a trustee, I bring the perspective, first of all, as a parent, but also understanding that every child K through 12 will ultimately finish school and have opportunities in the workforce. And we certainly hope they stay here and add to the skills and abilities of our workforce. So that pipeline begins as early as kindergarten, as children are exposed to interaction with others, social and emotional skills, emotional intelligence, negotiation, compromise, whether that's on the playground or the classroom. And those skills are so inherently important in the workforce. What I hear from thousands of chamber members is that while they're willing to train and hire individuals who may not have been great students, they need that emotional intelligence, they need that exposure to the business world. And each child deserves an opportunity to have not just a job, but a career in something they're passionate about. So I think that pipeline is built from kindergarten through 12th grade, the opportunity to know that this community can count on high school graduates, public school graduates, to be the superstars of the community, the influential leaders, perhaps the politicians, the decision-makers. And we should give every child an opportunity to be exposed to the workforce and understand that they have equal chances to become self-sufficient, financially independent, and productive in our community. And we should focus on that as we grow and educate our students. I hope I've answered your question.
Thank you very much. We're going to go right to trustee Dr. Nicolette, District G.
Welcome, Anne.
Thank you.
The Washoe County School District Board of Trustees utilizes a balanced governance approach to conducting business. Please provide your understanding of balanced governance.
Well, I think it goes back to understanding the role of the trustees versus the school administration. And much like the question as to why the board should probably stay out of the weeds, a balanced approach means that the board fulfills its duties and the school administrators fulfill theirs. I'm very well-versed in protocols of best practices for boards, having served on many and having, for five and a half years, reported to 17 board members. And I do believe, in my role, we strive for a balanced approach to governance in that everyone knows the role they should play and tries very hard not to cross that line, to respect people's titles, to respect people's authorities, to respect people's sense of the public input. I think public input is critical, and although I know it can last as long as 1:00 or 2:00 a.m., I think public input is part of the responsibility of a trustee to have the patience and fortitude and willingness to listen to. I think a balanced governance approach allows the board to collectively resonate with each other in terms of their public commentary, but also bring their best game to their job and using the best, most objective thinking, find a way to resolve all issues at the board level to address, to show the community that this board of trustees can work together closely as a team in what is the best approach to education for every single youth every single day.
Okay, Ms. Silver, we have completed all of our questions, and we certainly want to give you an opportunity at this time to share any closing remarks you want to leave with us here. The Board of Trustees?
I think my closing statement refers back to my initial comment that I would love to see this board take a bold and innovative approach and put someone who is, put someone on the board who brings the approach of the community and the business community. And that does not mean I don't think kindly of children or education or schoolteachers. I am in awe of what this school district accomplishes. But I think I bring a unique voice, would bring that unique voice. I'm skilled in compromise and negotiation, arbitration, a willingness to understand and learn, to endeavor to be a superior board member who works with each and every one of you to respectfully understand your point of view and your perspective and to work hard to find answers to the issues we all struggle with, which is how to keep our education system thriving, how to ensure that it reaches the best status it can, not only in the community, but in our country and in our state, and to ensure that we are all active listeners of one another, showing respect and working through due process to do what we know is in the best interests of every child in this district. I know it wouldn't be typical to have someone like me on the board, but I think it would show and demonstrate to the community that you're willing to look outside those individuals who are respectfully very committed due to being a parent or being related to an employee here. And having neither of those qualifications, I believe I would lend a voice you have not had before. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Silver. Certainly, you're invited and welcome to just hang in and watch the rest of the interviews, and we'll keep moving forward.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks for your time.
Before we pull the next name, why don't we take a quick little break? For us to say, let's just take a 10 minutes, and then you can... JJ, you can go ahead and just pull, let me pull the name, but just cover up the questions so they don't have that ample opportunity to, the extra opportunity to review them, okay?
Tyler Rogers.
Okay. All right, everyone, we're going to take a 10-minute break and then come back with Mr. Rogers. We're actually right at 11 minutes, but, well, actually, I think we're right at 10 minutes. So let me go ahead and get started. We have Mr. Rogers. I know, yeah, no jokes around Mr. Rogers. Yes, Mr. Rogers.
That's my dad.
All righty, well, welcome, sir, again, and just a quick review, and then you'll have an opportunity to review those questions in front of you.
Go.
Again, quick review, 30 minutes. Don't have to use all of them. Most haven't, but that's okay. It doesn't matter. To give us your opening comments, we'll each have a question. There may be follow-ups to comments or even maybe comments to an opening remark that you give or so. And then we've, that will come, and then at the very end, there'll be time, you will have an opportunity to give us closing remarks, sir.
Sounds like fun.
All right, yeah, it's a blast. All right, you'll see the questions there in front of you. We'll give you an opportunity to review those.
I look forward to them.
Yeah, before we start. Why don't you go ahead and do that. Take a look.
Give a quick peek?
Mm-hmm.
I think it's more fun to just be surprised, Angie.
It's just whatever you, if that's your choice, that's up to you.
No surprises.
Again, trustees, just keep your eye on public climate along the way, if you will. We have some that come in, so.
Looks like a good list.
All right, fantastic. We will start then with trustee, our colleague in District A.
May I have some opening?
I'm sorry? Oh, I'm sorry. Now, see, you didn't remind me this time. Oh, no, I didn't. Oh, shoot, I did. Okay. All right, please, I have two reminders. Thank you. I need all of them. I need all of them. You can never remind me too much. So we'll go ahead, please, sir, with your opening comments.
Thank you. It'll take a few minutes.
Okay.
Happy Monday. Thank you for having me. I remain humbled to be part of this talented group of finalists. And Beth and I were just chatting. It was actually a great pleasure to just sit up there and get to know folks a little bit more. It's pretty unique for a job interview to just sit and chat with folks, but it was actually really a positive part of the experience today. And I'm sorry that Hava didn't get a chance to do that. But I was happy to see you're in a bolo tie, so that the fact that there are two out of five finalists with bolo ties on today makes me very happy. This group of finalists brings so much to the table. Today, you have to assess each of our individual strengths, and which of those strengths will most help the board and in turn the district. Let me try to help to call out what makes me different, so you can best decide if those traits are what the board needs. First and foremost, I'm going to have a clear focus about community engagement. Sometime I'm going to speak a fair amount in my opening remarks today, but I think that it is a strong skill that I have of building relationships, listening to folks, and I think it's a strength that the board could build from. Second, as I mentioned last week, I have both a rising student but also a teacher in my family. My wife is a teacher in the district, and I will have my daughter in the district in the coming years. I think that direct access is really important, to have direct access to both of those sides. As I said last week, let's not lose sight that all this institution is set up to do is ensure a powerful interaction between those two sides in the classroom. Also, trustee Manetto, you mentioned that there could be a conflict of interest in future negotiations, and I would commit that I would recuse myself if any of that stuff came up and ask advice from general counsel as it relates to my wife being a teacher. I mentioned last week I'm a millennial. This is a stakeholder group is entering the district in significant numbers and is stakeholders for the next few decades, and I think that's an important voice for the board to continue to have. Education is not my expertise. I'm the first to admit that. So I'm an outsider. I'm a business leader. That's the sort of perspective that I bring. I think there are a lot of strengths on the board around education. And lastly, my roots are in District D. This is my community. This is the folks that I have to represent. So let's drill a little bit deeper on the community engagement point that I stressed at the start. The strategic plan that you've outlined, as well as I saw an update to it last night, has five goals: academic growth, highly effective personnel, family and community engagement, continuous improvement, and safe and welcoming schools. When I look at this board, I think you guys have academics, managing people, running organizations, and safety well-covered. But I think I could round out things on the family and the community engagement fronts of goal three. Sure, I can say this, these are words, but I think actions speak louder than words. So how do we do this? Engaging people starts by listening and learning. I have attempted to do this throughout this process by engaging each of you to the extent I can, as well as reaching out to the District D principals and speaking with District D students. Here's what I heard from those stakeholders. From this board, I heard that you're looking for someone not politically motivated. The 30,000-foot level is critical to maintain. It's an honor and a privilege to not lose sight of that role on the board. Being a team player is critical. It's a vote of one of seven. You have to be passionate. You have to constantly have a desire to learn from each other. Leadership is critical. Ability and willingness to learn, or to listen, I'm sorry, bringing us together. And most recently, what I heard from trustee Rodriguez is about tolerance. All things that I heard from this board, which I think are critical. What did I hear from principals within District D? I asked them, what do you need from a trustee? What I heard, a few things. The most important thing for us is to continue open communication. We like to share on a regular basis all the great things our teachers and students are accomplishing and the goals we are moving forward. Another quote, which I think is very important, trustees come and go all the time. I hope to see authentic advocates. I think there's a lot of power in those words and from their experience with trustees. And lastly, from another principal, I believe the most important thing is to listen and to seek, to understand what it means to work in a school daily. It is frustrating to have people making decisions for our schools who have never sought an understanding of what happens at school each day, month, et cetera. I ask that you empower us by working to understand what it is we really do. And lastly, from some students. A Roygum third grader, I asked these folks, what do you want from school each day? Every day I go to school, I want a teacher who is happy and nice to have time with my friends who aren't in my class. And I hope to go to the library more once than last year. From a Swope seventh grader, school every day varies, whether I have a test or a sporting event. However, one thing stays constant. I hope to achieve something. Behind achieving something, to me, is good work, a good work environment, awesome people around me, and personally, a positive mindset. So in all, when I go to school each day, I hope for a busy functioning machine made up of positive attitudes, great teammates, and a growth environment. That's from a seventh grader. That's really impressive. And lastly, from a Reno high sophomore. I think of school as preparation for my future, and the school should provide something for everyone, whether they, wherever they go, or choose to do or study. Every student should have a chance to follow their pathway to success. When I go to school each day, I want to know what is giving me the opportunity to prepare me for my future. There's so much to be learned from these words, and they're a small subset. And I would enjoy helping to hear even more as a partner in engaging the community and my constituents. Another proof of this, I think, is some letters have been sent to the board on my behalf, and so hopefully that's a testament to my ability to build authentic relationships within the district. Lastly, as I close my opening, I stress this point about community engagement and this part of the strategic plan, because I view that there's a huge opportunity on this front facing the district. What does that mean? Depending on where you feel, we've lived COVID. We're probably still living it. But my observation is that people have a new appreciation for this institution in a way that they never have. When you have your kids at home and you have to teach them, you also have to do your job. You have a new appreciation for what this institution does on a daily basis. And there's a lot of opportunity to capture on that, to seize on that energy. We see this in the numbers. North Star, the district forecasted that 2,000 folks would sign up, and only 750 did. It's a sign that people want to be in the classroom. Another topic, the pupil-centered funding plan goes into effect for the first time this school year. this school year, there are going to be a lot of questions, and I think there's a clear opportunity to engage the community on what that means. And lastly, I feel like there's been a little bit of a lost control of our narrative. Without town halls and visits, we are losing a critical link to the community and relying on others to relay what is happening in the district, and often only the friction makes the news. Lastly, President Taylor in last week's meeting did as any true Nevadan does and made sure the world knows how to say our state's name. We are part of a Nevada community, but too often the success of our district gets lost in the metrics as a state. Let's make sure our community knows more about their return on investment, so they are engaged to take the district to the next level of performance. Thank you for allowing me some opening remarks, and I look forward to your questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rogers, we're going to start with District A. Trustee Church?
Thank you, Madam President. Question, what are the major budget and spending issues faced by the Washoe County School District, and how do we fix them?
Great question, thank you, trustee Church. I think, coming in probably a few months ago, it was getting to a balanced budget or being able to get back to funding levels in which the district had seen. Fortunately, we have federal stimulus money that has come in to help that in the short term, but I think, we were talking upstairs about WC-1, that has helped significantly on the capital front. I think operationally is the next place in which there are a focus to be had. Trustee Rodriguez has brought up tolerance and safety and other aspects, and I think those are programs that the district has to invest in, as well as finding ways to keep our staff engaged and motivated. I think those are all part of an administrative budget, and are tricky topics when our state's funding mechanisms and system is set up and with certain limits, and a lot of that stuff is beyond our control, involves action from the legislature. So I think the biggest, the biggest, capital is well-covered, but I think on the administrative side is probably the area that we have to focus.
Trustee Church, okay, we're going to go to trustee Minetto, District B.
All right, thank you, welcome.
Thank you.
What efforts would you put forth to stay out of the weeds?
I think, it's a great question, I've heard this from trustee Nicolet of the 30,000 level, but it is critical for the board to not get into the weeds. I think, first and foremost, it comes with trust in the decision of the superintendent that you've hired. That prevents the board from getting out of the weeds when you have hired professionals to do that work and trust what they are surfacing. I think the other part of it is sort of guidance over what is on the agenda of the board, and the policies that guide what gets on to the consent agenda versus the actual agenda. I think that's a key aspect of decisions that are made of what topics the board will dive into.
I missed, I was taking some notes, I missed a little bit, go back to what you talked, you talked about the agenda and topics, will you go through that one more time? I'm sorry.
Sure, no, I think, I think the control over the consent agenda items versus the items for the normal agenda, I think, is a critical sort of funnel, so to speak, of the types of topics that are sort of agreed to that we don't need to go deeper on or sort of remain high-level versus the broader subject matter.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Yep.
Sorry, I was taking notes, I didn't follow.
That's great, I appreciate you taking notes.
I was taking notes. All right, we'll go to our newest colleague, trustee Rodriguez, District C.
Good morning. Good morning. Could you support a board decision you did not vote in favor of? Why, or why not?
Absolutely, that's part of the job. We're a team of seven people, and there will be absolutely times in which we disagree, that's a fundamental aspect of life. I think what this board does and the way that we hold ourselves and the way that we do business and the way that we make decisions, a level of mutual respect, we can agree to disagree, that is a fundamentally American ideal. So, if the decision is made in a process in which I have supported and understood that's how, that's how the sausage gets made, so to speak, I have faith in that, that's why there are processes in which you believe how decisions are get made, so, absolutely. Like, I would hope to get to know each of you and build sort of a personal relationship, I think that's part of also agreeing to disagree, is to find that there are going to be times in which you don't agree, but if you can understand a person's motives, I think you spoke about sort of an 80/20 rule or finding compromise, that's all part of the process.
Okay, thank you very much, trustee Rodriguez, and next one's mine, trustee, District E. As you know, and this certainly no secret, the board has experienced quite a bit of scrutiny over the past several years. What specific experience do you have that you believe will lend stability and community confidence?
I think, I spoke a little bit about this in my opening remarks, but I am a salesperson, it is my job to listen to stakeholders and clients and find a way to help them achieve their goals. I think that is a directly translatable skill to what you were asking for. I think the element of community engagement that I spoke about is key here, we have been limited because of COVID in how we can engage and connect with our constituents. Town halls haven't happened, school visits haven't happened, our constituents in our district haven't seen these folks out en masse in a long time, and that's critical, and that's why it's a goal on the strategic plan, that this board visits all schools at least once a year, I think we could aspire to do even better than that. But, I think, like, I'm excited for some of the COVID restrictions to be released so that we can go out and build that trust and bridge these barriers or these perceived conflicts that are sort of seen in the community, and to be honest, I don't think they're as deep as we see in the news. I think there's, the majority of our community believes in this institution, doesn't mean that the folks that are frustrated shouldn't be heard, that's critical.
Thank you, I'll just go do a follow-up to that.
Please do.
When we talk about town halls, and part of this is because of your background and some of the things you said earlier, do you think utilizing virtual opportunities do that same type of thing, or do you think it's really, what's your, just what's your take on that?
I'm a millennial.
I was just going to say, I'm talking to millennials, just thinking.
You're talking to a millennial that doesn't use Facebook, but I understand that it is, yes, folks prefer to engage that way, and that's just, that is modern times. We have to find ways to be able to communicate with folks how they'd like to, and some of that may be digital, maybe we have a digital Zoom part of the town hall meeting, but yes, I think we have to find different ways to talk to people the way that they like to communicate.
Thank you, I appreciate that. We're going to keep going now, District F, trustee Calvert.
Good morning.
Good morning.
What do you see as major strengths and weaknesses of the Washoe County School District?
I think the major strength, salute, trustee Church, I think the major strength of the district is what you've been able to accomplish with the resources put in front of you. The state has, we all know this, very low per people's funding, 48th in the country, but when you look at the metrics of this district, you're at average and above average in a lot of those, like, that's amazing, look at what we've been able to do with limited resources. Imagine what could only be done if more resources were invested in this institution. So I think that speaks to a key strength. In terms of weakness, I will go back to the community engagement thing, I think we're distracted by some of the noise, and I think we can find ways to get through that and not allow it to be a distraction. And so, solving that problem, just getting more connection to the community, I think also the aspect of like workforce development, I think there's a great opportunity in our economy diversifying, and to allow the district to help that educational workforce be grown here, and to modify a lot of what we're doing, I think CTE is an early indication of that, more of that would be great. Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much, looks like you're good with that. Trustee Calvert, we're going to go to trustee Nicolet, District G.
Hello and welcome.
Hi there.
All righty, the Washoe County School District Board of Trustees utilizes a balanced governance approach to conducting business. Please provide your understanding of balanced governance.
Well, fortunately, Dr. Allesbury was here to give us a little bit of some Cliff Notes about the balanced governance approach, so I will not attest to be an expert on it, but he provided a sort of a spectrum of boards that get down in the weeds versus sort of let the professionals do their work. And I think what I observed was that the governance that this board shoots to accomplish is somewhere in between that mix.
What does that mean?
I think, again, I'm not going to, I'm not going to say to be an expert on balanced governance, so I would enjoy learning more, but that is what I took away from that session, is that boards that are overly, provide too much oversight, or predict, or sort of, yeah, too much management oversight of their staff, are too prescriptive, are not successful, that the district is not successful, and boards that are sort of checked out as well are just sort of, they're, yeah, not in a deep meaningful way engaging with folks are not also successful, that you have to find somewhere in the middle, somewhere in the balance of oversight. I think oversight is the key word that I sort of see, how much oversight are you providing over the district?
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, thank you, I can tell by that look on your face, Dr. Nicolet, you're like, I need to go in for more, but I'm not quite.
I'm glad that you did, and, yes, I would hope to chat more too with you about it.
All good now, Dr. Nicolet?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, Mr. Rogers, we have completed all of our questions and the follow-ups that we've had so far, so we're going to give you an opportunity for some closing remarks, final remarks that you want to leave with the board's trustees.
Perfect, I admire the transparency that this group had in the, I guess it was the last interview where you guys sort of went around and sort of acknowledged, so I want to be fully transparent about just a trip that I have tomorrow. I know that the board is meeting, the first board meeting for these folks tomorrow, I happen to be out of town for a work trip, I want to be transparent with the board, it's something that I could dial into a meeting remotely, but I want you to have all the information. Trustee Church has spoken about availability is an important thing, I want to be transparent that this will not be an issue for me going forward, but it was hard to manage calendars, to be honest, for the whole process of not knowing what would happen through this, so I just want to be transparent that I would have to be remote for part of tomorrow.
That means you're out, no, I'm kidding.
Sweet, it's been fun. Yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to leave today without sort of being transparent and just honest with you all. So in closing, I watched trustee Rodriguez take the oath of office last week in this room, and honestly, it was the first time that I'd ever seen that happen in person. I worked in Washington DC, I've seen it remotely, but it was moving to just see the power of that moment. And the first thing that you and everyone that has been on this board swore to defend was our constitution. There's a lot of wisdom in that document, and these are things that I learned in this school district from civics lessons, and there's a lot of important things that we should not forget. Built into that document are aspirational statements that we are all created equal. When you think more about this, you come to see a fundamental American belief, that we can always do better as we strive to achieve that city on the hill concept. We are not perfect, but wow, can we do great things when we try to take small steps forward together. It's those incremental steps. I hope I can channel my own personal optimism and desire to keep taking steps forward to make us all better and to move us a little closer to that North Star by bringing my voice and energy to this board. Thank you for your time today.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers, we appreciate it. Again, you're welcome to hang out for this last interview.
For sure.
No need to go to the cup on this one, JJ.
You can do, that's a problem.
Yeah, we'll have another meeting, another agenda item. But we will welcome Ms. Serena Robb. She comes. Again, a reminder to colleagues, keep your eye on the email for any, for any public comments that come in. Ms. Robb, welcome.
Thank you, I think I was in this position last time, too.
I know, I don't know what it is, maybe the paper with your name on it hangs closer to the bottom, don't know.
Maybe it's because there's so many letters, who knows?
Okay, well, we welcome you and thank you for your patience, for being, again, last again, but we are, we're certainly looking forward to our time with you as we've had our times with our other applicants. Just as a quick review, I'm going to give you an opportunity in just a moment to review the questions, so hang on a second, hang on, hang on, hang on, I'll give you that in just a second, I just want to make sure we're good, hang on. I'm going to give you a chance to review it, why don't you do that now, do that now, go. Jeff, you ready to remind me if I need you to?
I'm on it, I'm on it. More coffee.
Okay, looks like you're good to go, so this is what we'll do right before we jump into your opening remarks, that's my reminder, everybody, for the record, we, just a quick review, each of, each of the trustees has a question that they'll ask, there may be follow-ups to those questions, or even to some of the remarks that you may make, excuse me, and then when we get towards the end, should there be remaining time, you'll have an opportunity to do closing comments as well, okay?
Right.
So we're going to begin with your opening remarks.
Okay, good morning.
Good morning.
I'll keep my remarks brief because I want to have ample time to answer your questions. First of all, thank you for choosing me as a finalist. Second, there are a few things that I would like to tell you about myself. One is I'm a proud Washoe County School District parent. All of my children, both of my daughters, John O'Quinn, who is the principal of Greenberry Elementary School, and my daughter Lander Robb, who is a journalist in New York, and my stepson Duke Rittenhouse, who's an editor with the Reno Gazette Journal, all attended Washoe County Schools from K through 12, and they all came out really well, at least in their mother's opinion. Now, it is our family's next generation, five of my six grandchildren attend or have graduated from Washoe County Public Schools. The other one lives in New York, so we'll assume she's out of zone. The third thing I want to say, and I want to be very clear about this, is exactly how I see the position of trustee, because I believe there are important things that you need to do today to know about your candidates to make your decision. I'll begin by saying I agree 100% with trustee Nicolet when you said last week, serving on the board is a view from 50,000 feet above. To me, that is not micromanaging, nor is it teaching, or is it an administrative position. The Washoe County School Board's trustees position is the governing body, a policymaking and shaping job for our school district. I also see being a board member as a member of a team. If you have disagreements off the field, leave them there. On the field, you work together, you share the ball, you always play to win. And finally, I think most importantly, I see myself, based on my years of experience, as being the nexus, providing the crucial connection between the board, the community, and our community schools. All of my fellow candidates, I believe, are extremely accomplished professionals. But I do believe that I am the only one who served in many positions in many different county, Washoe County Schools. I believe I'm the only one who really knows how the policies affect schools, because as a site administrator, it's been my responsibility to implement your policies at the site level. I believe that firsthand, deep knowledge can prove a tremendous asset to this board. With that, I'm delighted to take your questions.
Thank you, Ms. Robb, we're going to start with our colleague in District A, trustee Church.
Thank you, Madam President. Question, what are the major budget and spending issues faced by the Washoe County School District, and how do we fix them?
That's a very global question, sir, and there's all kinds of answers if we wanted to get into the weeds. I think personally, right now, our main concern is bringing our kids back to school, and I know there's federal funding to assist with that, and I believe that that money needs to be budgeted appropriately so that the students make the transition, and by the students making the transition, that means also providing assistance to the teachers and their parents, and to make it a healthy process. As far as budgets, there's never enough money, we know that. there's never enough money. We know that. There's also money that is spent sometimes by people's perception that it's frivolously spent. But regardless, the main concern right now, at this time, is getting our students back to school as healthy and in the best position able or possible to make them successful. And that requires spending the money from the federal government, make sure programs are in place.
Thank you. Is there a follow-up to that, trustee Church? No? Okay. All right. Thank you, then. We're going to go to District B, Corpanetl.
All right. Thank you. Welcome. What efforts would you put forth to stay out of the weeds?
For me, that's probably difficult because I tend to see minutia, and I want to fix things from the bottom up. But I believe the role of the board is to oversee the programs. But I also believe when you are initiating these programs and you are asking for information and you're trying to come up with policies and you're directing the superintendent to delve into all of the different issues that you're concerned with, you have to be aware of something. You have to have some cognizance of the weeds. Because otherwise, your policies will not be effective. And you're going to have voids in your policy, and you will not see fruition. So, my effort would be, from Serena Robb's standpoint, is to try to look at things globally, take all the issues into consideration, all sides, not focus on the what-ifs or what-could-be's, and try to move forward with the policy as it's being presented.
Thank you very much. We're going to go to trustee Rodriguez, District C.
Good morning. Could you support a board decision you did not vote in favor of? Why or why not?
Well, that's called consensus building. That's predicated on the leadership of your program. And the leadership of the program or the person in charge of that particular, whatever it is, decision, should make available all sides of the issue. Issue could be well-investigated. The pros and cons should be decided. But ultimately, there has to be a decision made. And I believe a well-informed person, and by that I say well-informed, an educated person, can make a decision, even though they might not be in total agreement, if it's for the common good. And that would be my answer.
Okay, you're nodding, so it looks like you're, trustee Rodriguez, okay. District E, that's me. My question is next. As you know, excuse me, Ms. Robb, the board has experienced quite a bit of scrutiny over the past several years. What specific experience would you bring? What specific experience do you have that you believe would help lend stability and build community confidence?
I've been employed by the school district in 1971. I have seen thousands of kids, I'm sure, over the course of all those years. I think my experience, based on working with students and my reputation of working with students, would lend stability to the scrutiny of the district. I was an assistant principal at Reed High School, where we looked at the issues that the kids had with suspensions and in lieu of suspensions and taking them out of school. We created a Saturday school program with tutors so that provided the assistance they might need in classwork. But they were also, it was a consequence to an action. But that itself was a positive reaction and positive program. When I was also at Reed High School, I was the athletic director. I believe I was the first female athletic director in the district, at least in Northern Nevada. And I also was the only athletic director that didn't know the difference between a softball and a baseball. However, I did manage to do that, and I gained the experience through process of working with the coaches, to the point where I was teaching coaching effectiveness for the State Athletic Association. So, I believe that's another indication of the fact that I have experience in that area. When I was principal at Worcester High School, we have two programs I was very proud of. One, we had many students at Worcester that were in transition. In other words, they did not have a permanent home. And so, through donations, we built a drop-in center. And we had washing machines and dryers and showers and clothes and toiletries for these kids. Because who wants to go to school when, you know, when you don't feel good about yourself? And I was very proud of that project and was funded totally by volunteers. I think, once again, that's an indication that I would be an asset to this board because I bring that experience. I also, when I was at Worcester High School, we broadened the IB program. From a curriculum standpoint, I believe that has taken on recognition by many in the district. It was the first magnet program in this area. And just to bring you up to speed, when I was opened Damani Ranch High School, the first time I saw the school, it was a hole in the ground. I was just telling people upstairs. And it was just the excavation site, and it had all the wires. I just remember all the wires running. And that school, as you know, it's just a gorgeous school. It's beautiful. And our curriculum was unique. And we had some, and all the faculty that was hired for that school were asked to, you know, to look at it in a different way. It was a 7 through 12 school. But we earned the respect of the people within our community. So, in answer to this question, I believe I can't speak to the scrutiny of you in particular, but I do know that my experience in this school district would lend stability because of the things I've accomplished and the fact that I've been here a long, long time, as has my family.
Thank you very much. We're going to go to Dr. Nicolet, District G. Oh, I'm sorry. Did I miss District F? I'm sorry. I'm sorry, trustee Calvert, District F. My mistake. Thank you.
Good morning. What do you see as the major strengths and weaknesses of the Washoe County School District?
I'm not sure how this can be corrected. Maybe it's marketing. Maybe it's attitude. But when I meet someone, and even in my little store, and they tell me what they do, they preface it with, "I'm only a teacher." And that, to me, is heartbreaking. Because I believe being a teacher is the most honorable thing you can do. Working with kids is just the best. And being in a position where you can actually have an affect on them is beyond the best. So, I think the district has a responsibility, the board, the district itself, to promote yourselves. You're just not a teacher. You are a teacher. And there are ways to do that by celebrating education, by celebrating the teachers, by not making them feel like they're, they work so hard, by prizing kids that go to school, like working with the families. There's so many different avenues you can follow to try to promote your school district. And this is a wonderful district. I am so proud to have been a part of it. But you know what? There's no ceiling to education. There's no ceiling to learning to do better. And so, therefore, I believe you should hire a marketing director and move forward.
In your resume, you mentioned a store. Could you go into detail about that and...
My store?
Yeah, you said something about a store.
I sell shoes.
Oh, I didn't know that. Okay.
No. Thank you for asking. When I retired, and because I mentioned my husband's illness, I've always had to be busy. So, I opened a little shoe store. And it's just a little shoe store, 800 square feet. I tried to offer an alternative to department store shoes. Some women like my shoes. Some people don't. So, but I've been there for 16 years, and I've survived the recession and the pandemic. And it's still open.
Okay. That took care of that for you, trustee Calvert? I said, okay. Now, we will go to our esteemed colleague in District G, Dr. Nicolet.
Thank you very much. Congratulations on your shoe store surviving this thing that we had.
Thank you. I'm going to accept that. It's been a challenge. Thank you.
All right, here we go. Last but not least, the Washoe County School District Board of Trustees utilizes a balanced governance approach to conducting business. Please provide your understanding of balanced governance.
Balanced governance is fairness. It's fairness. It's being informed. It's being educated. It's looking at all avenues. And it's coming to a vote. But you can't vote if you're not informed. You can't make a decision if you don't have all the facts. And there has to be truth to the facts. It can't be someone's idea of what it is. It has to be the correct idea. It has to be, it's not a figment of someone's imagination. It's real. So, I believe balanced government is governance is simply being fair, just, honest, truthful, with supreme leadership. And you'll do fine.
Okay. Thank you very much. It looks like there are no further questions from the board. So, we will turn it over to you for whatever closing remarks you have that you'd like to leave with the board.
Well, again, thank you for your time. And, you know, I would just be thrilled to have this opportunity personally to continue and grow the mission of my professional life by serving, continuing to serve the kids of Washoe County. I believe strongly in this community. And if I can be of service, I would appreciate that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Again, before we bring this to, back to the board, to the board, back to the table for discussion, we do want to have public comment. And of course, along the way, JJ, if you would, please, let's read the names of those who have submitted public comment. Because those public comments will be a part of the official record. As she gets things all set, again, I just want to thank all of the applicants who came, who submitted. I mean, it's really an impressive slate. You're making our decision very difficult. Certainly very difficult.
John Appolito.
Mr. Appolito, welcome. You know the routine?
My name is John Appolito. I'm with Protect Nevada Children. Congratulations to all the candidates. A few of the candidates, one, Ms. Ahmad, has done work on data privacy issues, from what I can see, mostly for us adults. Protect Nevada Children will be willing to sit down with Ms. Ahmad or any candidate or a board member and talk about how our students' data and futures are much more at risk than us adults because of official and unofficial education vendors. This young lady has been very politically active on the far-left fringe. Many of us believe she will not be able to separate her strong feelings, which she has written extensively about. One example, she wrote, quote, "I believe that systemic reform is necessary to ensure that our policies evolve with the changing ideology of our membership. I believe Nevada Dems should understand, believe, and embody the fact that Black Lives Matter," end quote. She is currently a progressive lobbyist for Clark County School District. Many see this as a conflict of interest. Ms. Smith, "In my opinion, her current position as Diversity and Inclusion Global Program Manager shows her political bias. I don't think we need a board member who's here to push their political views on our children. I'd like to see this board come together and focus on something that we can all agree on: educating children, reading, writing, listening, and verbal communication, math, science, social studies, and history, and spend less time on comprehensive sex ed, social and emotional learning, social justice curriculum, critical race theory, and keep the kids off of the screens for three hours a day." Mrs. Robb, Superintendent Morrison, and Deputy Superintendent Pedro, and I all have a history, as they tried to implement the IB program in all schools and incline. Even though most in our community did not want it, at the end of the day, it appears only one of those three listened to the majority of our community, and that was Heath Morrison. If the goal is to keep our community divided, appoint one of these three individuals. If not, pick one of the other two candidates. You can find 1,200 of us on our private Facebook page, Protect Nevada Children.
Thank you, Mr. Appolito.
You're welcome.
Shannon Coley.
Welcome, Ms. Coley. You too. Welcome back. You know the routine?
Yeah. I find it interesting that the balanced governance model was brought up today because I would like to remind the board that there is another stakeholder in the balanced governance model, the community. In Dr. Alsberry's workshop material, he says, "The board should recognize that all members of the community are stakeholders in the success of their schools." The board engages the community using reciprocal advocacy process that creates and sustains meaningful conversations and feedback loops. So, with that said, now is the time for you to show the community you are listening. In this hyper divisive time within the country and the community, I believe the very last thing we need is someone who is an actual political activist, which Ms. Ahmad is. I would like to read an email from the Washoe Dems. "The Washoe County School Board may vote as early as Monday, July 26th, in the morning, to replace trustee position left open by the resignation of Kurt Bigpen for medical reasons. Last week, the school board named Joe Rodriguez to fill trustee District C position, in part of thanks to Democrats like you who emailed their support for him. Let's do it again and stop right-wing radicals from distorting the history of our great country to suit their subversive agenda. And this board is constantly talking about the importance of diversity. I'm curious how many Democrats are currently on this board. I can take a guess. It would be very courageous of this board to choose someone with diversity of thought." Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Coley.
Those are all the cards I have.
Looks like Mr. Duran would like to make comments as well. Welcome, Mr. Duran. You two know the routine. Welcome back, I should say.
Yep. Okay. So, I cannot trust these people anymore, but I want to remind the guy, so you should not influence any candidate who would oppose your idea. And you should, like, stay in your lane. Okay? All right. So, let's talk about the candidates. So, I do believe Tyler Watcher is a great, he's a great business reputation and model. And I like his business. But I'm sorry. And I do like business reputation. Hannah, he's a lobbyist. He served a lobbyist at Clark County School District and John School District for the greater purpose. Sorry about that. She not white fit. And Tyler Watcher might be fit, but not exactly. But and server, she worked Nevada Brother Sister Big Club. I don't know what it's called. So, I do like hers. And she have a certificate of Human Reaches, Society of Human Reaches programs. And so, I like, I think she could be a role model for my predictions. So, my G-travel become an HR manager. I like it. But since she could not work at School District, I don't think she not white fit for the candidate. The two candidate I could read as white candidate is Sarah Robb and Beth Smith. That's a very difficult decision. But I do live in Jester D, but my neighborhood live in 650. So, my newer neighborhood is we, Jeremann Lee. So, by the way, so Sarah Robb, she's a select director. And she's a principal of Worcester. And then, from 1994 to 2002, she was the principal of Damani Ranch High School. She was a zoning community. So, I read my email. You read my email last week. Then I typed in the email, sent it to you this week. I got no time. So, very difficult. She's an amateur brewership. She is lucky. She tried during pandemics. Beth Smith, she worked at ITT. She was a zoning community, which is very difficult to reach. They're very poor, I, zoning community. Some parents don't agree with. So, I do read Beth Smith. So, the only one candidate who should be fit is Beth Smith. She should be a white candidate for this school board. She should be a white candidate for this school board.
Thank you, Mr. Duran.
The board also received emails from Brandon Siri, Beth Martin, Charlotte Stewart, Janet Butcher, Dr. Shania Richardson, Rachel Fisher, Catherine Hoffman, Kristin DeHaan, Sarah Ferguson, and Jay Carpen.
Thank you, JJ. Okay, we'll bring it back to the board for discussion. First of all, thank you for all of you who came in person to make public comment, and then certainly we have not as many comments on the applicants who were sent via public comment, but we certainly have got quite a large amount sent in direct emails to the board, to at-board members, mostly at-board members, so just know that we receive those, we read those, and, and all of those help as we make our decisions, so we want to thank you. And again, one more time, thank you for all the applicants who came and put your name in to have on such a very public and unusual interview process. Okay, so we'll bring it back to the board, open for general discussion, or we can go around with who would like to begin our commentary. This is when things get tough. What a great, I want to go with the word that trustee Church said a week ago, almost a week ago, after we had the five-minute presentation, wow, I think that's a great place to start. I mean, great applicants, great finalists, all very different, all bring very different things, but certainly all are really, really formidable. So again, you've made our decision difficult, so. That being said, I'll bring it back here to the board for discussion. Anyone, I see, are you leaning in? No, not leaning? Who would like to go first? Colleagues? Okay, I'll go with Dr. Nicolet. Thank you.
I just want to share with my colleagues and anybody listening that I, here's something I struggle with, is the current state of politics and the sentiments that, you know, politics should stay out of schools and school boards. And yet, when we look at the intent for public schools, and we go back and we review history, it is very politically based. And I say that because it has to do with educating a populace that will vote, that will do their homework, that will support economies, that will be taxpayers, and so I struggle, and I don't expect anybody to solve this for me, but I struggle with the concept of bifurcating politics and public education. And the reason I bring that up is because I, I want us to continue to recognize the reason that we even exist, public education, is we exist to educate students on a basic level so that they can vote, they can make informed decisions, and they can pay taxes so that we, as a society, can make great things happen. Washoe County School District, as many school districts, but in particular, as a trustee of Washoe County School District, is faced with so much more than just that task. We are faced many times with being the safest place where a student comes during the day. It might be the safest place a teacher comes during the day, or our staff, our janitors, our nutrition services. It's got to be a safe place for our students, and that takes us far beyond simply being an engine, an institution, that educates our students so they can vote and pay taxes. And it's very complex. And when I listened to our five candidates, I heard something really important from every one of them. And where I'm resting with making a final decision, and I assume we're going to, with choose three, and we're going to give three points to the top one, to the next one, to the next one, is that correct?
I believe last time we rated all five, I believe last time we rated all five, one, and five, five being the highest.
Okay, thank you.
Five, four, three, two, one, so we'll follow the same process that we followed last time. JJ, you can correct me, I know you're looking it up. The process we worked last time, I think, is one of the things we want, you just want to be consistent.
Yes.
Right? No reason to change it or anything like that. So I believe that's what we did, should verify that, and we'll follow that same process.
Okay, makes the most sense. So, and thank you for hanging in there with me, because to me, this is, as, this is vitally important, and I know it's important to you, or you wouldn't be in this room, and it's also very challenging. And what I think of when I have to now start giving points to five people who have, who have taken the time and risk sharing their soul and their heart, this is very difficult. But again, I want to share with you what I'm going to look at, are the focus of our students, our families, and our community. Those are the three things that I listen for the most, all couched in the, this notion of leadership, and how we, as seven people, will work together to make good and important things happen. And so, as, as the five candidates think about what I'm saying, think about, you know, what you shared with us, because that's really what I listened for, and I took copious notes. And please know that whatever the decision, because I'm just one person, I hope that you will look on the website and see what committees have open spots, and serve, serve, begin at that point, or continue at that point. And just know that I want to thank you very much, and I appreciate your time and your talent, and I have a great deal of respect for all five candidates.
Thank you, Dr. Nicolet. See, I saw you're like next, trustee Church.
Well, thank you for not making me go first this time. I was watching, and so, thank you.
I'm sorry, I'm just going to interrupt for a moment, because this might be interesting. Please don't lose your thought. We, last time we did the top three, and again, we want to stay with the same process we did the top three, so it'll be three, two, one. Thank you for the clarification. I just want to stay consistent with what we did before, so, three, two, one, and I thought that might be important for people to have in mind as you make your comments, trustee Church, so, please, go ahead.
That is good. So first of all, in my opinion, every single one of the candidates aced the interview, absolutely aced the interview. But that's not the only thing we look at. So I had so many negative emails on one particular candidate, Ms. Ahmad, and the Washoe Teacher Association, Washoe Education Association, wrote a letter of opposition. And a lot of times, they probably opposed me, but they gave some very definitive issues with her being a lobbyist for Clark County, and then the things that were read into the record about her comments, I think are just so adversarial, so activist, that was another term that was used. I was her number-one supporter last time, because she aced the interview, spoke so well, but with these facts that came out, I just want to make it clear, I absolutely cannot, cannot support her in any way, shape, or form, and I withdraw any support that I gave last time. It's just not a good fit. So then, who is a good fit? Any of the four candidates. I absolutely could be proud to work with, with any of the remaining candidates. So as I tried to narrow it down, and it gets back to Dr. Nicolet's comments about how much politics plays into it, I kept coming back, and I did get, we did get tons of emails through our direct email, and obviously, there was an email support campaign going on, but it comes back to, I looked at Ann Silver, with her background, with the different backgrounds, with nonprofits, with government, HR is a big one that she has, and I know Ms. Silver casually, we butted heads many, many times, and that's not the issue. The issue is she said that she can work with, with us, and would be willing to communicate. But believe me, I, I almost joke, maybe I shouldn't support somebody, because then they won't get in, but, but I found her education background, her work with the CEO with the chamber, her background in all the other work, she used the term innovation. The chamber is political, but it's, it's not highly political, so I just was very, very impressed with Ms. Silver. And then also Tyler, I almost make a reference to Ronald Reagan, and not holding your youth and inexperience against you, was, you just aced the interview, background exceptional. There is the issue of the wife with the school district, which is a plus and a negative, but not something that's insurmountable. And I want to go back to my notes here, the energy that you bring, I enjoy your humor, you think on your feet, and you commented on community engagement, and we don't have a millennial. I don't know what the average age on the board is, I won't speculate, but I probably skew that. You made a comment about not being politically motivated, obviously, again, we all come, we're Ds, or Rs, or Is, but it's all about the S for student success. And again, you commented on being a team player, even if we may not agree, you commented on double, Tom, Town Halls, not Tom T. Hall, the singer, Town Halls, and you voiced your support of WC1, which I was opposed to, but I'm not afraid to engage on that kind of thing. So those are my top two, but any of the four candidates that I mentioned are outstanding, but those are my reasons that I think I'm going to probably lean toward those two individuals for my, my top two. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Church, and you have gone first the last couple of times, though. So yeah, like last time, I think trustee Rodriguez actually went first the time before, so, but before you have, especially at this process, when this gets, when it gets down deep into it, so, thank you very much. Other comments, colleagues? Clerk Minneto, I see you're leaning in?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, Madam President. Well, this may seem, well, who cares? I was impressed with the people who said that they had learned from Dr. Alsberry, and that was Tyler and Beth. They, you seem to have a concept of what governance, balanced governance is, when it's not what it always sounds like, even though it is, but that impressed me. Thank you.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you, Clerk Minneto. Well, this, we have to, I typically go last, we'll look to trustee Rodriguez and trustee Calvert. Trustee Rodriguez, and then trustee Calvert, that means you're up next. Okay, yes, yes, sir, go right ahead.
It's a very hard decision. I have to kind of agree with trustee Church and Minneto, especially with the, you know, out of the four, unfortunately, but I do kind of lean towards Beth Smith and Tyler, and, you know, the remaining. It's, it's hard, and having been in your shoes, and these are, these are tough questions, very tough questions. I know mine were pretty bad, too, but, but these are pretty rough questions, and, you know, kind of going back to the balanced government, actually kind of doing a little bit of that homework, looking into that, does stand out, and then just the years of experience with the other two candidates are, you know, very, very impressive. And I, you know, as I said before, I do believe with Beth Smith, you know, having children in the district does mean a lot, you know, I know it means a lot to me, you know, my kids are going through the same stuff as our constituents are, stakeholders, so that is something that will stick out to me, and same with Tyler, so.
Thank you, trustee Rodriguez. Trustee Calvert?
I'm not going to name candidates, but I was very impressed with every one of you, and I thank you for coming out and giving your resume, giving your time, and I looked for as well, how much interest you have in our community, how much interest you have in our students, and how much do you, time do you want to spend investing in the district? So those are things that I looked at and I listened for, and the balanced governance as well, because that is something that is very important to me as well, that we all find a way to somehow get along. So I have not really made a decision decision, but by the time this is all said and done, I just want to thank you for coming, and good luck to all of you.
Thank you, trustee Calvert, and I will do as I've typically done. I'm going to just talk about the areas that I, that have, that I have found important, and I've been pretty consistent in them in this process, as well as the process for District C, and those things that I think we have, right? The things that I think that, not that we have, but that we need. We want, and I think any of the five candidates would add some value, bring something to the board that we don't have. Someone speak a little bit about each of those, each of the candidates, and then specifically in the context of leadership, that's always been my top one, leadership, leadership, we are a young board, we're continuing to kind of evolve and find our way and find our place, and that's not a bad thing per se. We kind of regrouped at the beginning of the year because we had new trustees, and now we're regrouped at the beginning of the school year because we'll have new trustees, and, and that's okay. Looking at experience, experience that, that each of the candidates have brought, either experience in your work experience, that can bring something that, that can add value to us, or your experience within the school district. It could be as a parent, it could be as a community member who's been very involved, it could be working in the school district, right? Different voice, but that's, the true value of diversity is the different perspectives, not because we all look different, right? Jackie and I look, we're both African-American females, but our perspectives are different, right? So it's, it's bringing the different perspective, that's the true value of diversity, and the voice, so a voice that we don't have adds something to us. The team piece has always been high on my radar, collaboration and team, that's why I really, I really did appreciate your question, trustee Rodriguez. I'm like, look at the new guy, coming up with a great question, but I just appreciate that. How do we do that? Because that's the challenge, right? When we land some places, like, man, that's not where I wanted to land, right? How do we deal with that? That's a real issue, right? I think, because we're human, right? That's a real issue. We have constituencies, we have expectations, we have things, ideas, that's a real challenge that we always constantly have to battle, I think, as, as board members. And then students, who spoke about students? Who spoke, who spoke, who spoke about students? Who spoke about students? Because at the end of the day, I think it was trustee Church that said, what really matters is not the R, the D, the I, but the S. Who really spoke about students? Because that's, should be the basis for why all of we are here, all of us are here, so. Those are the things I looked at, and then, so let me just have some comments. I think some of the things that, that Ms. Ahmad would bring is she understood funding and the legislative process in a way that someone who doesn't have her experience does not, and then that brings something to us that we don't ordinarily have, right? She has a comprehensive work in, in education across the state, not so much here quite yet, but across the state. Ms. Smith, the, the way that the zoning committee has been run and has added value and has had community voice and listening, and really working through some challenges. Zoning, when I, when I was first, when I first joined the board, there were a couple things that people said, people are going to be so up in arms about this all the time, no matter what, zoning was one of them, and we have not had that much to the, to the, I think, because of the zoning committee and the work that Ms. Smith and her committee has done. Ms. Silver, I mean, the business perspective, we can't get any better than that, her experience having worked with the board, having seventeen bosses, you know, how it feels like to be on the other side, right? You only have seven, so you should be happy, right? Working on the other side, what does that look like? And a whole different perspective from there. Mr. Rogers, the energy that you have, the millennial perspective, certainly being a parent, those are extra things that are added as well, and then, of course, Ms. Robb, her experience in this district is second to none. This has really been her life's work, and this will be an opportunity to continue that. And she was the most student-centered, I think, in terms of her responses, they were the most student-centered of anyone, and because, that's just because that's who she is, so. That being said, those are the kinds of things I'm thinking about, those are some of the best strengths, I think, each of our candidates at it. I don't know who my three are going to be, and I'm sure I'll be the last one to turn my form in again, because I usually am, but this is tough. It'll be so much easier if some of you guys were bad. I mean, it's not, but it's, this is just really, really tough, and that's meant to be a compliment, and I hope you receive it that way, so. Did you have your hand, did you want to say? Oh, I thought you said, okay. All right, so that being said, any other comments? So we have, do we have a, we have a form that we're going to get from JJ, who's done an amazing job helping to manage us through this process. Thank you so much. As a recall, as, as a reminder, thank you, JJ, we're doing our top three, and your top choice, you get three points, your second choice, you get two, third choice should get one, and then put your name on the form, so do that first, so you don't forget.
Absolutely.
Put your name on the form at the top, because as you, you know, of course, all this is public, and as it should be, okay? We'll turn them in, they'll count, and then we'll, we'll keep going from there. Okay, we'll just make just like a quick five, a little quick low-five recess. We have her over there, her, JJ, Mitch Bashelder, as well as Counsel, I know they wrote, they added everything up, and she's going to read for, by each, according to the trustees, how each of us voted, so if you would please, and then we'll get, then you'll give us the totals as before. Okay, please go ahead.
Trustee Calvert, Beth Smith, three, Ann Silver, two, Serena Robb, one. Trustee Church, Ann Silver, three, Tyler Rogers, two, Serena Robb, one. Trustee Minneto, Tyler Rogers, three, Beth Smith, two, Serena Robb, one. Trustee Nicolet, Ann Silver, three, Beth Smith, two, Tyler Rogers, one. Trustee Rodriguez, Beth Smith, three, Tyler Rogers, two, Serena Robb, one. President Taylor, Beth Smith, three, Tyler Rogers, two, Ann Silver, one.
Counsel?
So after, again, higher math, otherwise known as addition, so Serena Robb, four, Ann Silver, nine, Tyler Rogers, 10, Beth Smith, 13. And that was confirmed by JJ as well.
Okay. Hopefully everyone had a chance to jot those down, you see where we are, four, nine, 10, and 13. We can go forward in a couple, couple different ways. We could take a, make a motion, take a vote now, we can go, I think last time, the motion was to go forward with the, with the top two and then do a vote from there. It's really up to what is the pleasure of the board at this time. Trustee Church?
I'm prepared to make a motion to go with the top two.
Okay, we can certainly do that.
Then I'll make a motion that we go with the top two candidates, narrow it down for a final vote, and that would be candidate Smith, applicant Smith and applicant Rogers.
Okay, thank you. There's a motion on the floor that we go forward and then do a vote again on the top two. The top two being applicant Smith and applicant Rogers. Is there a second to the motion? Okay, it looks like the motion dies for lack of a second. Okay, so we're open for another motion at this time or further discussion, whether it is a pleasure of the board. Trustee Rodriguez?
If I just may say something, I haven't been there last week.
Okay.
Going with the top two is, we were tied, myself and another candidate.
Turn your mic on, please, sir. Okay, thank you.
The reason why we, I believe that the board went with the top two is that there was a tie at the time, so.
Okay. Okay, is there, is there a motion, there's a different motion someone would like to make at this time? Dr. Nicolet?
Yes, I'm ready to make a motion. I make a motion that the candidate with the most points at this point, which is Elizabeth Smith with 13 points, be moved forward to be the representative for District D.
Okay, there is a motion on the floor that the board go forward with candidates, applicant Smith, is there a second?
Second.
There's a second on the floor, a second from our Trustee Calvert, any discussion? Okay, Trustee Church?
I certainly feel it's a wonderful applicant, and I could definitely work with her, but I am probably going to vote no, because I just would like to give Tyler a chance too.
Okay, thank you very much, I hear that. Clerk Minneto?
I'm kind of in agreement with that, I kind of think that the top three would, because they're so close in number, but I don't know.
Okay, it's okay, I hear you too. Okay, I mean, there, we can go whichever ways in the, whatever's the pleasure of the board, right? Okay, just as a reminder, though, because we certainly have some differences, which is okay, there's six of us present, but there still takes four, takes four votes for, for the, for there to actually be board action, even though there aren't seven, because even though seven aren't here, seven still are numbered, so we still need a quorum, which requires a vote of four. Okay, so again, the motion on the floor is that applicant Smith be appointed to fill the vacancy in District D, there is a second, any further discussion?
I just, I just want to clarify that I, any of the four would be absolutely fine with me. There is, there is three points difference between number one and number two, only one between then the third one, and then five between the final. And again, I would be, it would be an honor to serve with any of you, but I think there's a, there's a clear top point getter.
Okay, I appreciate that. Dr. Nicolet, Trustee Church?
Thank you, but on that same comment, there's 13 votes between Silver and Robb that could go either way to Tyler. It's not, it's not like really clear, 10 to 13, but you have 13 votes if we eliminate Silver and Robb that could go either way, and that's why I'm going to no.
Thank you, Trustee Church. Okay, seeing no further discussion, we're going to take a vote. All those in favor of the motion, again, the motion is to appoint applicant Smith. All in favor of the motion, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition?
Nay.
Okay, we, why don't we do a roll call, just to be safe?
Trustee Calvert?
Yes.
Trustee Church?
Nay.
Trustee Minneto?
No.
Trustee Nicolet?
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
President Taylor?
Yes.
Motion passes four to two.
The motion passes four to two, so the motion again is to, is for applicant Smith to be the appointee for District D. So congratulations, congratulations, who's in front, give your hand. Okay, and again, I mean, what a difficult, difficult, difficult process this has been, and I can't thank you enough, I think on behalf of all of us, three of us up here have gone through this process before and know what that's like, and we just really appreciate it and want to encourage you, don't let this be the last we hear of you, because there's so many, so many, so much value you can add to the district, and we need it, and we certainly, certainly need it. Okay, we'll go on further, further in our agenda, I think public comment's next. Oh, yeah, well, we should do that swearing in right now? Okay, oh, we did that last time. Okay, so Ms. Smith, if you will meet me at the podium, did I do that last time? No, I didn't, I did it from here. Okay, I did it from here.
Thank you so much.
Okay, so that, that way we can get you, and we'll have you, we'll have you seated right away, okay? That's close by, so we just sit you, we just sit you over there because it's close by. All right, I, state your name.
I, Elizabeth Smith.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support?
That I will support.
Get that hand up. Protect?
Protect.
And defend?
And defend.
The Constitution and government?
The Constitution and government.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and government?
And the Constitution and government.
Of the state of Nevada.
Of the state of Nevada.
Against all enemies?
Against all enemies.
Whether domestic or foreign?
Whether domestic or foreign.
And that I will bear true faith?
And that I will bear true faith.
Allegiance?
Allegiance.
And loyalty?
And loyalty.
To the same?
To the same.
In any ordinance?
In any ordinance.
Resolution?
Resolution.
Or law?
Or law.
Of any state notwithstanding?
Of any state notwithstanding.
And that I will well and faithfully?
And that I will well and faithfully.
Perform all the duties?
Perform all the duties.
Of the office of school trustee?
Of the office of school trustee.
On which I am about to enter?
Of which I am about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Well, congratulations, it is official. We will seat you for the close of the meeting, and then there will be a ceremonial, a ceremonial swearing in. Okay, wait till after the meeting. There'll be a ceremonial swearing in where your family can be here with, first thing before the meeting tomorrow, and I know that staff will immediately send you the packet, so you have a little light reading between now and tomorrow, yeah, to prepare, and certainly staff's available, any of us as trustees, as colleagues are available. If you have any questions, we know it's the first meeting, so it can be a lot. Okay, all right, well, welcome. Okay, now we'll go on to Agenda Item Three, public comment.
John Appolito? The board also received an email from Joe Morabito.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Appolito, welcome, sir.
Oh, thank you, my name is John Appolito, I have two kids left in the district, and I'm with Protect Nevada Children. I wanted to talk briefly about this opinion piece that was in the Reno Gazette Journal a couple of weeks ago, as to why the initial public comments were removed from the agenda. As I recall, at that meeting, it came out that the board was not aware that that was going to happen. Evidently, President Taylor and someone else made that decision behind the scenes. And as I also remember at that meeting, there was at least two, maybe three board members who didn't agree with it, but it doesn't matter. All this talk about, what is it, transparency and working together, there's at least a couple of people up there who want to keep the community quiet, and it's really sad, because you say one thing, but you do something else. It's very frustrating. So anyway, I'm going to submit a response to Taylor, President Taylor's comments to the Reno Gazette Journal later today, and I'll also post it on our Facebook page, Protect Nevada Children. The board is not transparent, and I know some people on the board want to be transparent, but it doesn't work like that. And also, I had made a comment once that I've been intimately involved with this board for 12 years, and this is the first time I've seen initial public comments be removed from the beginning of the agenda. Somebody told me that it may have happened during the sex ed discussions. You know, you can't just shut the public up when things get sticky. Democracy can be messy. Shutting people up is not the solution, and hopefully the board will come around and change this. Hopefully, the Reno Gazette Journal will publish my response. Also, briefly wanted to talk about this counselor, this Washoe County School District counselor that got arrested on child pornography charges after catfishing probe. First of all, I don't know how he ever got hired, but I know, we also had a counselor in Incline, who only worked for one year, at most one year. She might have left before the school year was over. No one seems to know what happened to that one either. These counselors have access to that secret tab in Infinite Campus, the counseling tab. The counselor that you guys hired for Incline Elementary, or Incline High School for five minutes, told me that it was illegal for parents to see what's in that tab. Of course, she was wrong, but it doesn't matter. She believed it like we were, like she knew what she was talking about. So where do you guys find these counselors? And they have access to that tab, you really should let parents know what's going on with those secret tabs in Infinite Campus, and we'll request that again, and we'll also request a copy of all the data fields in Infinite Campus. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Appolito.
You're welcome.
Pablo Nava Duran, Mr. Duran, welcome, sir.
Hello, how you doing? Okay, so many of you think I should characterize this too, so I'm not a far left, far right or left, I'm not streaming, so I'm a sexist, so. So I do propose America for all, free to talk, minimum wage, and the board is going to skirt it, so. So I want to, and I want to say, congratulations, Trustee Smith, you got your first day, and Trustee, so support, we got, I see you two weeks ago, I met you in the final, and I had to left for the doctor appointment, so I want to congratulate you, so for the honor, so I want to meet you guys one-on-one, and maybe anytime after 2:00 PM from Wednesday to Saturday, from, and next week, after two, you know, any stoppage location you want to meet, so I will send you an email, by the way, so. So I want to make a moment about the mask of a student, like student who are optional, so here my proposal, so I know there was season over here, not such, you know why, reason why I had to wear a mask, because, not such, because of death of it, it's because of wildfire seasons. So that's snow coming from fire, time of fire. I think I recommend that all students should wear a mask regardless of if they're vaccinated or not. I think we should make the proposal on the vaccine requirement for students who are entered high school, get the Pfizer COVID-19 vaccines, so to get the vaccine before high school, we done that, like got to take the COVID-19 mask before I had to go enter middle school, sixth, to seventh grade, I don't know what grade we're on because of sixth grade creation, but we do have sixth grader and major schools, so I think all sixth grader will be in middle school in next year, since the swap and applying, few years go to sixth grade. And I want to make a, I want to make a question about Ms., for Ms. CC, so the inflation rates very high, inflation go up, that worry about the school cost, that slowed down the WC1 funding for the building new school, and I know the inflation rate will be not to be long-term, it could be short-term problem, so everything could be back to normal. Dr. Sign of Gay Back to Normal, says a template, and have a nice day.
Thank you, Mr. Duran.
That's all I have.
Okay, thank you very much. That concludes our agenda, that concludes our agenda for today. We will be back on a regular, back at a regular meeting of the Board of Trustees tomorrow at 2:00 PM. Again, thank you very much for all of you who attended, who shared your public comments, those who were involved in this process, those who emailed us, all of this, a very difficult, difficult process for us, you made it really, really hard, and, but we are excited to welcome now two new colleagues, from one school year to the next. So again, we are adjourned, thank you very much, everybody.